I call the meeting to order for the January 28th Planning Session. It's nice to look out and see so many wonderful people attending this. It's much more exciting when we see this many people for Planning Sessions over pickleball. So, welcome, welcome. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Now is the time for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Protem O'Neill, will you provide the invocation?
Lord, thank you for this gathering. Thank you for the ability to gather. Thank you for the blessings that you've provided to the city. And thank you also for the challenges so that we can come together, talk about them, and try to resolve them in the best way we can possibly. We ask that you watch over those people, especially who put themselves in harm's way, our first responders. We ask that you watch over nationally those communities that are suffering right now because especially those first responders who failed to do their jobs and did so dramatically. And we ask that you heal those communities that are suffering because of it. We ask that you watch over our national first responders and our U.S. military. Please keep them safe. These things we ask in my name. Amen.
Councilmember Stapleton, will you lead some pledge, please?
Please join me as a salute, the greatest sign of freedom in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Now is time for public comments on non-agenda items.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. My first comment is that on the agenda, I see a lot about presentations from the staff. I do not know if any action is going to be asked of you because I do not see on the agenda any requests, as one might expect at a planning session, for direction or action by you. I also don't know if the presenters of the presentation are like me, chronic procrastinators, and are still in the audience working on their presentations, but I noticed that there were no handouts, as commonly are, of what the PowerPoints would be, nothing posted in advance of the meeting so that those following at home could have something to refer to other than the live video. And then finally, another thing I do not see on the agenda, if this truly were a planning session, I think despite some attendance, you would want to be informed and advised by a larger segment of the public than the few who show up for a session like this. And especially given the special nature of the meeting and the proven ability of our staff to do that, you would have had a call-in option so that those wanting to participate from home could provide their comments on the presentations, which we have no idea what they're going to be. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Happy New Year. First time seeing you this year in 2023. Mayor Blom, council, Dennis Bress, Balboa Island resident. Thank you for this planning session today. Looking forward to 2023 and all working collectively to problem-solve and make lives of citizens and residents in Newport Beach better. Beautiful day out there today, people walking dogs and having coffee. So, nothing better than being here and working through what we're going to do today. Non-agenda public items, what I wanted to bring up is I wanted to thank Grace for her weekly newsletter. We worked last year with John Pope and team to effectively take it from a text-based newsletter to an HTML newsletter. And it's vitally important to the community because it includes all of your hard work, all of our hard work, in an overview. And it's something that we can share with a web link on the top on social media. So it's really been a great way to get Natalie's work in regards to homelessness and that information out. I wanted to bring to your attention that there's a tool that has been developed by an Orange County local company. What it provides is currently as residents that are involved in helping you guys to help our community for city council meetings and meetings like this that are recorded, even though you posted the link to the recording on the website, there's no way that we can effectively go through these meetings or four-hour council meetings and search for what was said or who said it. Our current platform does not allow that. There's a company in Orange County now that has a tool, 21st Century, they partnered over 13 years, they've worked on this product. And they partnered with Google and they use AI that automatically does it. And instead of a $50,000 entry level to have this tool for us to use, especially for Jim, it'd be very helpful to be able to go through a four-hour meeting and search for what was said or who said it. Instead of an entry-level price of $50,000, it's a subscription price for $299 a month. So I think that's a pretty reasonable tool at a reasonable cost that we need to take a look at. It's also approved by Zoom, so you can do a Google search for Zoom Marketplace and it's called Cloud Channels. And it's pretty exciting because it's from a company here in Orange County that developed this, not Silicon Valley, Orange County. So this is a first of a kind. This is a way to make all Zoom meetings searchable by what was said or who said it, and also any media other than Zooms, which would be city council meetings. And it doesn't require any staff to do this. Currently, what staff does is they take the record of this meeting or council meetings and they put it on the website. Same thing here. That's a digital file. They drag and drop into the subscription service. And now automatically, that entire meeting, anything that was said via captions or who said it is now searchable. And you can share that link at the same spot on our current website that you're sharing the current link. So I hope the council would take a look at that as we start into the 2023 season as a valuable tool for all of us to use to help to make the residents' lives better based on the work we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any other... Hello, Lee.
Good morning, mayor and council. I never get nervous coming before the council because I've done this a million times. But today, I'm a little nervous because I have this fresh new council up here. I have worked as a volunteer on Balboa Island as kind of a government liaison now for about eight or nine years. And I remember the first meeting I attended, I think it was nine years ago, one of these planning sessions. Balboa Island had zero projects and we were not listed as one of the priority areas of the city. And now I look back at what the council and city has done over the last nine years and it's pretty amazing. So what I bring today is kind of unusual, and maybe the other villages will also do that in the future, is a Balboa Island wish list. And because it's a planning session, I thought it would be fun to bring a wish list, some infrastructure and other projects. I'll turn it over to the clerk. And it doesn't need to be part of the discussion today, but I think the council will find it informative and maybe we can have further discussion on some of these items. And I've talked to the other HOA presidents, our Little Island Association and Merchants' Association, so they've all seen this list, along with Terry Jansen, who's here today. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agend items? Perfect. Let's start it out then. We're... The first planning session item is an update on the city's financial status and budget development. We have a staff report on this one?
Yes, we do. And good morning to...
Good morning.
Yes, honorable mayor and members of the city council. And I'm especially welcoming to... For the new council members to their first planning session. This is actually... I enjoy this session quite a bit because it really provides us time to kind of set the stage on where we're going in developing the budget and also a lot of key issues that we're continuing to work on and to get the input from council is going to be very productive and I think good for the public as well. And I will also note, we will have the PowerPoints that are presented today posted onto our website following the meeting. And of course, it is recorded. And so you can see up here, as our agenda lays out, we'll start with that financial overview. I think it really provides that good foundation of where we're at. We have some very... I think, you know, we're in a strong financial position as we have always been and will continue to be through the efforts of the city council and staff working through all that. And then we'll move over into several initiatives and bringing up different folks from our city staff to talk through those. And then we'll probably have a break at that point and go into our CIP side. And Mr. Dave Webb will ably work us through that section. So I am going to go ahead and turn it over to our finance director, Jason Alley-Mall, to begin with the financial overview.
Good morning, mayor and members of the city council. Finance Director Jason Alley-Mall. I joined the city of Newport Beach two months ago, and so this is my first planning session. I'm happy to be here. Since I am new to the city, I just wanted to kind of give a quick overview about myself. So I come to the city of Newport Beach with 19 years of experience serving local government. I actually started my career on the public accounting side, auditing cities throughout Southern California. From there, I have worked in various executive leadership roles at the cities of Riverside, Los Alamos, Fountain Valley, and then most recently at the city of Tustin, where I served as the finance director and city treasurer at the city of Tustin. So I'm happy to be here today. And with that, we'll kind of jump into the fiscal discussion. So looking at fiscal year '21, '22, we thought it would be helpful just to kind of give a recap of what was discussed with the council last November. So in November, a $24 million budget surplus was reported to the council for the fiscal year, which was really largely due to revenues coming in higher than expected. In fact, revenues came in $27 million higher than what was originally budgeted. If you think back to when the original budget for fiscal year '21, '22 was being established in the first half of 2021, it's actually when vaccines were beginning to roll out, the state was just beginning to loosen restrictions for outdoor activities. And so therefore, the budget took a very conservative approach to forecasting revenue impacts associated with COVID-19. So for example, TOT revenue came in, well, actually was projected 12% higher, but actually came in 40% higher for the fiscal year, so $8 million higher. The strong rebound, in fact, in TOT revenues was largely due to two factors, and I think you guys have discussed this before. So you have revenue from short-term rentals that went from $4.5 million in 2019, so prior to the pandemic, to over $8 million in 2022. It's an 82% growth rate. And then although hotel occupancy levels have not quite returned to the pre-pandemic levels, higher room rates have now made up for this lag. So at the same time, when the fiscal surplus was discussed and the fiscal recap for fiscal year '21, '22 back in November, the council authorized staff to begin the process of purchasing property at 1201 Dev Street to house a new police headquarters sometime in the next decade. As you can see, the negotiated purchase price of $30.5 million is largely funded from that $24 million general fund surplus in the prior year. There's also the balance of $6.7 million, which is funded from the FFP and the general fund, CIP funds, which is actually anticipated to be repaid from the general fund surplus in the current year, '22, '23. The city actually has a 120-day due diligence period to investigate the condition of the property, and the close of escrow is still expected to close in April. But now switching gears, looking at the current fiscal year. In fact, the next couple of slides will focus on projected revenues and expenditures for the general fund for the current fiscal year. And so general fund revenues are projected to be $8 million higher than the adopted budget, primarily due to property tax, sales tax, and TOT tax revenue, which are the city's three primary sources of revenue. And we'll dive into those revenue sources on the next slide. But I did want to point out that other revenues consist of revenues like user fees, parking revenue, grant revenue, other intergovernmental revenue. And so the $3 million variance relates to mostly, but not entirely, recreation class revenue and then other intergovernmental revenue like grant revenue. The property tax revenue was budgeted at $131 million for the current fiscal year and anticipated a growth rate of 6%. Property tax revenue is currently projected to be 7% higher and is primarily due to changes in ownership. Sales tax revenue was budgeted at $46.5 million for the current year and was based on a growth rate of 3%. I do want to point out, though, that that forecast was based on a prior year ending projection for fiscal year '21, '22 of $46 million. But in fact, well, it landed $1 million higher than originally projected. And so therefore, the projection for the current year is really boosted by that prior year amount coming in $1 million higher, and then along with continued growth across all industry groups. And then similarly, looking at TOT revenue, it was budgeted at $28 million for '22, '23, based on a growth rate of 9%. However, the prior year ended actually at $27 million, which was $1 million higher than forecasted roughly a year ago. And therefore, the projection for the current year is once again boosted by the prior year coming in $1 million higher. In addition, many hotels are reporting record-high TOT receipts, which has contributed to the strong growth while continued demand remains for short-term rentals. So approximately 60% of the general fund's budget relates to personnel costs. And so budget savings are realized when there are vacancies, you know, from normal attrition. And so over $3 million in expenditure savings has been realized to date from vacancies. This does not anticipate future vacancies, which likely will happen just to normal attrition. And so at this time, actually, at the time of budget adoption last June, the council amended the budget at the same time of budget adoption to include an additional $5 million appropriation to increase the amount paid to CalPERS towards the unfunded pension liability, which increased it from $40 million a year to $45. And then also included an appropriation for $2.5 million from the projected general fund surplus for the FFP and CIP. And then material appropriations throughout the year have included council-approved actions related to, you know, employee COLAs, retirement contributions, and cafeteria plan contributions, which have been funded from the projected growth in revenues. So with that, a $10 million budget surplus is projected when looking at both the revenue side and the expenditure side, which is sufficient to cover the $6.7 million replenishment to the FFP and the general fund, CIP, as mentioned previously, associated with the Dev Street property purchase, and to fund the contingency reserve set aside, which is estimated to be $3 million.
So, sorry, just to... Yeah, I was going to say, just to be clear, it's important to note that the slide says $10 million budget surplus, but just remember, 6.7 of that is already allocated from a previous decision made by the council on the purchase of the police station. And then to Jason's point, $3 million to make sure we're hitting our reserve targets. So it says 10. It may end up being bigger, but that 10 is for the most part allocated, just to... I think it's probably worth mentioning.
Yeah, to emphasize that point, I think at the current stance right now, we're at a $10 million surplus. It's likely going to grow further from there, but that first $10 million is essentially spoken for at this point. And then above that, and you'll also recall, council policy is any surplus, half goes to long-term liabilities and half goes to neighbor enhancement projects. So that's probably after this $10 million what that next, whatever the ending surplus is, will go towards. But council will have that discussion at that point.
What was the $3 million? 6.7 to the 1201 Dev?
Right. The $3 million is our estimate right now. We... What's our contingency percentage?
It's 25% of general fund operating expenditures, so we back out those additional discretionary payments to CalPERS. And it's actually usually based upon the next year's budget, so that's not quite set yet. But we're estimating $3 million set aside needed to meet that reserve target.
Reserve.
Because of the growth of the operating budget and having to set 25% aside. So we want to make sure to have that in a contingency budget at first.
Yeah, so real quick, because it's worth just mentioning this, the... For folks in the audience who haven't been dealing with us at the Finance Committee, which is most people. So over the last couple of years, we did a pretty major review of our reserve policies to figure out if we're setting aside the proper amount of money. What we ultimately came to the conclusion is we were doing it properly when it comes in particular to the general fund. So the general fund reserve right now is three months of operating expenses. So it's about... It's pretty conservative on that front. And during the 2020 pandemic enclosures and whatnot, we did dip slightly into it, but we were actually able to... We were able to recover pretty quickly. But the... But that's what we're looking at, is three months. One thing we did when we were looking at that is we backed out the discretionary... So I'm sorry, I can't remember if Jason or Grace said this, but we back out our discretionary amounts that we pay on top of the unfunded pension liability payments. The reason for that is because if you continue to... If we continue to fund and we plan on it, the discretionary payments on the unfunded pension liability to pay down faster, it's fairly substantial how large that number is. And because it's not technically a kind of a mandatory operating expense, we backed that out from the percentage. So it's still a very large number when you're talking about in raw dollars. But that's because our budget is fairly large as well. So once you back out the discretionary amount that we pay on the unfunded pension liability, that's our operating budget and we save 25% of that into the reserves. And so when you see substantial increases in revenue, which... And also expenditures, it's mostly expenditures. When you see the increase in expenditures, then you're going to see an increase in the amount that we need to set aside into that reserve. So that's what we were talking about right there. That's how you get to the $3 million.
But now switching gears and looking at the upcoming fiscal year. So the economic outlook for the city is projected to remain positive next fiscal year, although we are forecasting a slower rate of growth, which is really just based on a conservative projection, looking at sales tax and TOT, especially when you compare it to the growth that we've seen coming out of the pandemic. But $299 million in general fund revenue is currently projected for next fiscal year, which is largely due to, you know, a $7 million increase associated with property tax, sales tax, and TOT, which we'll dive into on the next few slides. But I did want to point out again with other revenue, that $1.3 million is not entirely, but largely related to anticipated lease revenue associated with the Dev Street property. Looking at property tax revenues, these revenues are dependent on the assessed valuation that's established each year in January. Property tax revenues are projected to increase about $4.5 million next fiscal year, which is largely due to the inflation adjustment that's indexed at the 2% cap allowed by Proposition 13, and also due to changes in ownership, which is partially offset with an anticipated decrease in supplemental property tax revenue as it's possible home sales slow due to rising interest rates. The increase in assessed values for next year relates to changes in ownership based on home sales data that we actually received from the county assessor's office, but it's only for the period, 10-month period, from January 2022 through October 2022. And so in fact, November and December home sales data is not included in that projection because it wasn't available as we were developing the forecast. Therefore, the fiscal year forecast for '23, '24 is a conservative forecast, considering we do expect an increase in assessed values associated with home sales in both November and December. So sales tax revenue is projected to increase half a percent, you know, really due to modest growth from restaurants and hotels and the state and county pools, which is partially offset with a modest decrease in general consumer goods and autos and transportation. These four industry groups actually make up 86% of our sales tax revenue. The forecast is based on the most recent sales data that we've received from the state of California for the quarter ending September. It was actually up 10% compared to the same quarter a year ago. And then if you compare that, though, to the prior year, so September of 2021 versus September of 2020, that was a 17% growth factor. So as mentioned previously, we are seeing a deceleration, not decreases in sales tax revenue, just a slowing in terms of growth. TOT revenues fell, actually, as you can see on this slide, 16% in 1920, and then a dramatic 19% the year after that in 2021. But then you can see it rebounded 58% and then another 9% in just this current year. So TOT revenue is projected to grow, you know, really at a conservative forecast of 3% next year, as we do continue to see continued demand for travel and leisure. However, I did want to point out that staff has conservatively not included revenue from the new Pendry Hotel, which is expected to open sometime late summer. I guess before we move into operations, are there any questions or comments on the revenue side of the discussion?
No, let's just move forward. Thank you.
So the city of Newport Beach has a very robust budget process, as you can see, which actually began several months ago. So the Finance Committee, as you can see, is an integral part of this process. In fact, the Finance Committee met earlier this month to review the updated long-range financial forecast, which really sets the stage for the development of the upcoming budget for this fiscal year. There are several tentative meetings and study sessions that are proposed over the next few months with the city council and the Finance Committee, which allows for public engagement and council review of the upcoming budget, which really begins today with the planning session. The primary focus areas include revenues, expenditures, and capital improvement program. The last year around this time, the council was provided with an update on the city's pension-funded status, which reflected $100 million decrease in the unfunded pension liability that was a direct result of CalPERS earning 21% in fiscal year 2021. It actually brought the city's funded status from roughly 70% to 80% in just one year. In June, at the time of budget adoption, the council approved a pension paydown strategy that was endorsed by the Finance Committee, which included a $40 million baseline payment to CalPERS towards the city's unfunded pension liability and additional discretionary contribution of at least $5 million from anticipated general fund surplus. So that really brings the total payment to CalPERS to $45 million, which is actually $15 million above the amount that's legally required to be paid. So that's that additional discretionary payment above and beyond what's required to be paid. And based on that pension paydown plan, the unfunded pension liability was projected to be paid off or eliminated in 2030. However, that was depending on CalPERS earning 6.8% every year. And so the investment loss for fiscal year '21, '22 was not known at that time. So in November, CalPERS announced a 7.5% loss for fiscal year '21, '22. The actual required rate of return is 6.8%. So if you think about it, the 7.5% loss from an actuarial perspective actually equates to a 14% difference, and that really erodes completely the $100 million decrease that resulted from that 21% return in the previous year. So the '21, '22 investment losses really effectively resulted in extending our paydown schedule by about two years. The current projection shows the liability will be eliminated now in '32, '33, which assumes the city continues to pay $45 million annually, and that CalPERS earns 6.8%, at least on average, over the next 10 years. The continuation of the $45 million pension paydown plan is based on a dollar-cost averaging approach, where really consistent contributions over the long term are expected to minimize those market fluctuations. Unless you have any questions, I'll turn it over to Grace to talk about budget challenges.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Jason. We are in the middle, I would say, in the throes of budget development right now on our operating budget side at this point. We're meeting together. The Finance Department budget analysts are going over the department requests. We're going to be starting reviews together with all the departments through all that. And as we do that, I just want to highlight some, some things that are certainly pressure points for us. I think we're going in in a, in a strong position. I think the departments have done a great job with the resources they have and calibrating through the pandemic. But certainly, there are some pressure points here. And I, I think first and foremost is the, the high inflationary environment and what that's done on our expenditure side. In particular, we're looking on our CIP projects. You know, this year, our CIP budget, you can see up here, 103 million. That's probably one of the highest budgets we've had for our CIP. That included carryover funds from prior years as well as new appropriations in this year. And we've had several projects come in considerably above what the engineer's estimate was. Our staff here has done a good job when these have happened of taking a look, can we value engineer? Do we adjust and do some phasing where possible? And, and we've gone back out a few times on some, you know, and some high profile projects as well, I think notably the, the Junior Life Guard building. We went out and, and went through that process again. So we'll continue to do those, but certainly that puts pressure on us. That's why replenishing that CIP reserve is important, because that provides us the bandwidth to have to take from that unallocated reserve as needed when these things happen. And but I think it's also important, we have a very robust CIP program to make sure we're maintaining the infrastructure that we have, and we want to continue to do that. We are an aging city with a lot of physical infrastructure here. And, you know, it's always the you either pay me now or pay me later through, through some of those. So we want to keep that going. Also hand in hand with that, on our operating side, we have a lot of materials and services budgeted, and we're feeling pressure points there on particularly some of the utilities, chemicals, some of those kind of large item purchases. We always do take a look at those line items within, within our budget with our finance department, but we're taking a particularly close look where we're finding the costs coming in at a higher level. And that also directly relates to this next bullet point here, our water and sewer enterprise funds. They're feeling all at our pressure point with rising capital costs, with rising material costs. And this last year, I want to say it was in the fall, we, the previous council will recall that we hired a consultant to begin a rate study for water and sewer rates to look at those. And on our sewer side, we are going to get past the five years of rate adjustments that were put in and approved. So we're going to have a gap in there for that while we go into this process to look at proposed rate adjustments there. We're in the middle of our water rate increases that have been set. But given these high pressure points, we felt it was important to do both of these utilities together and bring the proposed adjustments that will be needed to make sure that these funds stay healthy. And as a reminder for water and sewer, they are enterprise funds, which means they are fee supported. They don't have that general fund, you know, tax support from them. It's on the fee side. So it's very important for us to have the right fee, fees in place, rates in place for those to make sure those funds stay healthy. And there's, there's a considerable amount of capital projects in those funds that we need to continue to, to move towards. And then finally, really the recruitment and retention of city employees are, are, our operating budget. We're, we're a service organization, so we're, you know, approximately probably 80% salaries and benefits for our operating side, if you want to flip to the next slide. And we're certainly finding the challenges there with the inflation factors. We're seeing other, other public agencies doing adjustments on their salaries. We're very, we have good relationships with all our bargaining units, and we're in closed contracts with all 10 of our bargaining groups. But those contracts were settled at a time when it was certainly a different economic environment there. And the council has made adjustments, even with the closed contract over the last year. And so we're just mindful of that as we look at all these different factors that are happening for us throughout. And, you know, I will say, you know, we work very closely, our HR department is working very hard. We have high volumes going on on our recruitment side right now. So certainly taking a lot of data information from them as we're seeing, you know, changes happening and the different types of pressures there. So more to come probably as we develop the budget on that one. And then somewhat related, if we flip to the next slide here, is looking at areas where we need to adjust what the allocation of the staffing is. We're always very careful and mindful when we do this. You know, when you bring on another position, it's kind of a forever, you know, or and that's kind of the goal. So we're very careful when we are going to bring somebody on. But we do want to make sure we take a look at that and we're doing, having the right balance and mix. And that does play a little bit into some of the, the environment right now. We have a lot of areas where there are part time employees, and there are pressure points where if we're seeing a lot of accelerated turnover in the part time employees, if they're going off to find the full time jobs, if we're spending time, you know, on that churn, and it makes more sense to have one full time employee who's going to be more stable, then we, we want to bring that forward. So we're looking at some areas of that. And I will note in particular, the harbor department, the harbor department's fairly young at this point, but has had, it's five, five plus years now under their belt. So kind of have a sense of their operation. So our harbor master, Paul Blank, has really been looking at that department staffing and finding what that right balance is between full and part time. So we'll be bringing that proposal as part of the, the operating budget to you. And then there are some other areas where we're seeing just the service level demands heighten enough that, you know, we will always make sure we're meeting our service levels, but we want to make sure it's at a sustainable way that we're doing that. So there's a couple of key areas there that will be coming forth. I'm not ready to talk about them yet because we're still vetting through all the data and the numbers with departments, but that will, that will be forthcoming there. And I think that's our section here on our kind of overview of our financial status and look and what we're doing as we're developing the budget. It's really kept at a high level because it's really more to come. At we're, we're in the middle of developing that budget now. We'll be back. We'll be vetting it through the Finance Committee and then bringing it back for multiple sessions with the City Council. So we'll stop there and we're happy to answer any questions or, you know, bring staff up as well if there's particular areas you want to cover from, from what we had just presented.
Wonderful. We'll bring it up here. Mayor Proton O'Neill.
Yeah, so real quick, a few points for members of the audience. The, could you go back to the slide that had the budget flow? Yeah, that one works. Actually, could you go forward one? So I brought the slide back up so that if you're interested in participating as part of the budget process, our next Finance Committee meeting, I thought it was going to be February, March. Okay. So March is the revenue projection. So each of the Finance Committee meetings going forward, we're going to focus on parts of the budget and building up parts of the budget. So it's worth, it's worth paying attention. The number one thing we're going to be taking a look at in particular is the revenue projections. You, you know, you, you can't spend more than you have. So the operating expenditures will oftentimes, you know, will work toward, toward what those are going to be based on our revenue assumptions. So just want to make sure if you're interested in participating and being part of the budget process, this right here is a really good overview of where we're going to be heading and the discussions. My thanks to members of the Finance Committee. My thanks to actually members of the public who have been serving for a little while. We'll actually have a couple of new members coming up pretty soon. So thanks to them once they're confirmed. But, you know, you, the more you get into the budget at Newport, you realize the more complicated it is. And the more you talk to council members in other cities, you realize the more complicated it is. You know, when you're dealing with as many enterprise funds as we are, as many restricted funds as we do, in particular, you're dealing with the titans as well, it gets really complicated. But what's really fortunate, I want to go back, could we go back to the slide dealing with the property tax increases? I want to just highlight real quickly, one of the reasons we're able to be resilient the way we are is because with Prop 13, we don't decrease really ever, even during the Great Recession. We didn't see much of a decrease at all. And the reason for that is because with Prop 13, you're capped out. And so, yeah, you can certainly check your neighbors' property taxes. And if they've lived there for 50 years, they are paying a lot less than you are. But by do, by doing that, you actually see steady increases year over year, thanks to the stepped up increases. So it's a very, if you're relying primarily on property taxes like we do, you have a very resilient economy as a, a very resilient budget, I should say. I highlight that to compare us, for example, to Anaheim, where Anaheim relies primarily on a lot, don't get me wrong, a lot on property tax, but quite a bit on tourism and sales tax. Our, even our neighbors over in Costa Mesa rely very heavily on sales tax. So when South Coast Plaza was closed for quite some time, they were struggling a bit. So when you see, this is, this is a huge reason why we're able to continue to fund major, you know, the major services because, for example, just highlighting our, you know, the most expensive department we have rightfully is our police department, which is around 71, 72 million dollars. There are a lot of cities in Orange County that do not have an entire budget that large. And so, you know, to Grace's point, we are a service industry, and we, we do need to make sure we're providing the top of class services. And I mentioned it during invocation, but I mean, if you ever wondered why it's so important to make sure that you're recruiting in some amazing people into our public safety and retaining and training some amazing people, all you have to do is look around the country, especially yesterday. So just wanted to say thanks to, thanks to everyone who's serving as part of this budget process. But very complicated process. Look forward to working with folks on, on it going forward.
Wonderful. Seeing no more comments immediately up here. Let's go out to the public for some public comments on this item.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, to follow up on my previous comment, in this case, and I think almost every case where the staff makes a presentation, it's really useful if it's available before the meeting to post the PowerPoint slides. And then I think it stimulates and allows more intelligent questions when people see the words that go with the slide that they had a chance to review before the meeting. I have just a few comments on a few things I can remember from what I saw going by. First of those is with so much emphasis on inflation and rising prices. As to the revenue projections, it's a little surprising to see we're anticipating sales tax because you pay tax based on the price of what you're buying, would only be expected to go up by half of 1% with prices growing up much more than that. So apparently, the consultant who provided that number must be assuming that the spending is going to be cut back in the next year from what it had been in the past. People will not be buying. I assume that's the reason for that. We heard about the employee contracts that we're fortunate to have. Those of us who pay attention to your agendas would notice that your meeting on Tuesday, I believe, you had a closed session with all the employee bargaining group negotiators. So it appears there is some future adjustment being considered that the public is not quite sure what that discussion is about. And then as to, we heard about filling the full time and part time employee positions and whether there was a need for more than, more than what we have now, or need less, or whatever, the adjustments. The few of us who attend the library board of trustees meetings would be aware that there is a full time position, high ranking one, in the library services department that has been vacant for years. That employee being intermediate between the director and the staff, somebody called the library manager, who was poached to be the homeless coordinator, and the position has been in limbo ever since. So I don't know if that is still in discussion, or if you're even aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker.
Good morning, Dennis Bres, Balboa Island. Jason, welcome aboard. Great presentation. So a couple of questions I have. One is the unfended, unfunded pension liability, 300 million? Is that where we're at? Okay. So the anticipated based on our payback is over 10 years. And then I would make a second comment based on free money to come in. Part of what we received through, from Washington DC from the CARES Act was the 10 million that came in as free money that we used for the lecture hall and also for Junior Life Guard. So I say we actively go after as much free money as we can get. And I understand that through the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed last Congress, that there's coming to California, I think $54 billion for a wide range of uses. So I would hope that we would be communicating with, Diane could probably help us out there in Sacramento, to really actively look at what those funds could be used for at a city level and for what projects. Because a lot of that is going towards making cities more efficient in their energy use, for example. And then there's a ton of money available for residents to be able to use. There's a device called heat pumps, which I'm trying to get myself up to speed on. But basically, if you have central air or units on top of your house for cooling and heating, these are new technology devices that are subsidized through this Inflation Reduction Act that ultimately gives the resident a reduced high tech item that people in Irvine that are already sharing on social media, they've already pre-deployed this, that their energy consumption bills based on electricity went down from $500 a month down to like 35. So this is all really good news. And I know city of Costa Mesa had a sustainability position that they created, and the statement of work for that position was to try and reduce the footprint and the cost and be more green for the city. But what that position, in addition to that, could do is to help us residents navigate all this money that's available for EV car purchases, for being able to deploy EV charging within our homes. So there's a lot of this available, and I think we need to get our heads around what is available and for what purposes to help us to fund our projects. And then hopefully through what I'm advocating for is for Supervisor Foley's office at the county level to really take on the main lead of navigating what all this is all about, and then helping cities then, hopefully through either your staff, Grace, or through maybe a new position, a sustainability manager, so that we could come to our local city for advice and help on how to navigate. Because I can tell you, if you try to figure out how to take advantage of buying a new EV right now or purchasing a used EV, it's all up in the air. And there's still some final decisions that need to be made, but that's a good point that we take as a city. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Any other public comments on the city's financial status and budget
Mayor and members, good morning. I'm Chuck Van Char. I live in Jasmine Creek. I'd like to say that the presentation on the city's finances, which I have never been in the place to hear a broad presentation, was solid. And I walk away from it believing that on a operating basis and in a near term capital improvements basis, we run, our city runs itself well. And I think we, 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 I appreciate that as a resident and a taxpayer. I build on Dennis's point, though, to point out that maybe we do a very good job of dealing with operating budget and near term capital needs. I think that we live in a world where infrastructure is changing, and a need for changing infrastructure is in front of us. And we need to focus on long term capital, infrastructure improvements, how to project what's needed, how to find the money from someone else if we can, as Dennis suggests. But we need to focus on long term infrastructure. We do a good job on the current, current financial agenda, but we need to focus on long term capital infrastructure. I'm talking water, sewers, conversion to non carbon fleets in our city for the police cars and all the vehicles we use. We need to pay attention to that. Thank you.
Wonderful. You're, you're almost there. We're, we're almost on our CIPs check. So I appreciate you coming up on that one. We'll touch base on that in just a moment. Any other public comments on the financial status of the city or budget development? Okay, wonderful. And bring it back up to the dais here. Mayor Proton O'Neill.
Yeah, real quick. Charles, good point. That's, that was something that we didn't speak a lot about in terms of this last presentation. So I'm happy to sit down with you separately to talk about it, but just a quick overview. Years ago, before I was on council, City Council created what's called the Facilities Financing Plan, where they took literally every large capital expenditure from a property standpoint in the city, determined what the anticipated lifespan of that capital project was going to be, and made sure that they anticipated the funding required going forward. A lot of those funds, for a long, long time,
A lot of those funds, for a long, long time, were coming out of developer impact, development impact fees. I don't anticipate that to be the main revenue source going forward for us for a variety of reasons. So one of the things that the city does annually is send millions of dollars over from the general fund into a fund designated for that. And so part of what we, part of what we used to buy the, the, or we haven't bought it yet, but assuming we closed escrow on the police station, for example, came out of there. But we'll also be using, we also use that for replacements, like the, that's where we pay the debt out of for the, the fire station. It'll be where we end up replacing the fire station out of for the, for Balboa, or I'm sorry, the end of the peninsula, Balboa Peninsula. So the FAP is a really interesting one. Within the last five years, the Harbor Commission came up with a similar one for the harbor. So we have long-range projections. Not surprisingly, largest one there is going to be the seawalls around Balboa Island. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion in terms of long-term. We just didn't touch on here. We do, we will touch on a little bit coming up in the presentation about CIP, but, and then last but not least, the discussion about electrification and moving our fleet over. Yep, that's in the plan as well. So finance, one of our finance policies actually talks, this is, I'm a little in the weeds on this, but I'll just say real quickly, because it's an important topic, two things. One, state regulations are going to require us to move over anyway, and so we are, we will be. And as part of that planning process to do so, we have a finance policy that we've taken a look at a few times that anticipates the amount of money required to age out our fleet and replace our fleet. And that's from anything from, you know, the, one of the just kind of day-to-day cars for our community development department up to a fire station, I'm sorry, a fire truck. And so in order to make sure that our budget doesn't get hit by just one large ladder truck, which, how much do ladder trucks cost these days, Grace? 15 million dollars, 12 million dollars? They're not small, maybe less. No, no, ladder trucks, not the, not the regular trucks. Anyway, a little over a million for a ladder truck? Really? Oh, we should buy more. Anyway, so I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, Grace, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So, but, but just to make sure that the fire department doesn't get hit all of a sudden by, you know, a large expenditure like a million-dollar ladder truck, then what you end up with, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, my number is the station, not the truck, sorry. Wow. Yeah, that was way off. Sorry, I was thinking about our replacement. Sorry about that. Anyway, but I mean, still a million dollars. So the million-dollar ladder truck, to make sure that they don't get hit, we actually charge the department annually for the replacement, the anticipated replacement. And that goes into a long-term fund as well to make sure that the money's there for the department when it, when it's available. So just wanted to point out, there's, and that's just a small example of what we do, but that is, that is, there's a lot of process that goes into that. And we've been good stewards of, of policies that actually preceded us on some of these. So thanks for that. But I did want to make sure you, that you, I at least answered, yes, we do do a long-term plan as well. Thanks.
Wonderful. And I just want to touch real quickly, you know, Dennis, thank you. We actively look at pretty much every dollar available and I want to commend staff on that. They're, they work tirelessly, continuously trying to find every, I like that we called it free. Yeah, I don't believe that there's any free money. Everything has a couple of strings attached at least, but yes, but, but we're still definitely looking at pretty much every piece as far as that goes. And Jim, yeah, you know, I agree with some of your thoughts on sales tax and the inflationary piece of that. And we've discussed it at length in finances, as you've heard. But, you know, I think across the sector, we are looking at lower sales based on higher prices. And I think, you know, it's better for us to be a little bit more conservative when we start budgeting those things and be welcoming surprised at the end of each quarter rather than over forecasting, which just never seems great. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, in terms of, you know, looking forward, long-term for infrastructure, I think the, the harbor itself and the 12-plus contiguous miles of waterfrontage there is potentially a huge cost down the line as it's just aging all the time. And Balboa Island is a good example of, of it in this term right now, is we're putting in a new drainage system and pumps for the island at great cost, I think around 10 million. But also our beaches and everybody saw the flooding in the Bolsa Chica area on PCH. And we have had waves go, those of us that remember across the peninsula, the Balboa Pier into the parking lot, wrecking a bunch of cars and rolling into the bay. So, and then that July 4th, same wave height incident, waves coming across the beach up at Seventh Street and then rolling down Bay Avenue, West Bay Avenue, six inches high to the curb. So to me, that's a wake-up call when we have these things. And I think obviously our storms are getting a little more intense, the weather, anybody's paying attention sees the weather is unreliable in terms of the forecasts and in terms of the intensity and the suddenness and sort of the hard punches we get from wind events like we've had just recently, but also now rain events. So I think just looking, we need to take a good look going forward about how we harden all this infrastructure to protect the homes that are so low-lying in our community and, and not just the homes, but the businesses, the essential vitality of our community, to a large extent centers around the harbor. So, and I know we're already thinking about it, but I'm just saying, from the community standpoint, I think it represents a pretty significant challenge and threat going forward. Thank you.
Looks like we're going to have a robust discussion at CIP, so it's, oh.
Last one, actually, to that point, I agree with Councilmember Avery. And one of the things that I think would be really helpful for us in terms of our planning is actually to try to take back more of our harbor. I know we've had discussions about that for quite some time, but there are a lot of pockets inside our harbor that the county operates that I think, you know, I think years have gone by where the county has offered to send it back to us. We've, there have been times where we've offered to take it back and we haven't quite seen the matchup. But a lot of new faces on the county board, there's a lot of new faces up here. I think it's probably time for us to try to renew that effort to try, try to take back control of the harbor. And a really good example of that actually is most recently, the county and the city's interaction trying to just work through a small permitting process over near Pearson's port area. And that should be ours. There's no real good reason county should be involved in things like that anymore. So I know that's a long-term initiative, but that's what today's for. So to Councilmember Avery's point, I do, and it would be expensive, so there's got to be some revenue offset. And there's plenty of revenue generating property in the, in the county areas as well. But I think it's probably time for us to figure out how to take back more of our land use because on the holistic side, it's a whole lot easier for us to plan on the cost side when we actually control more of it. So anyway, I think that's, that's something on an initiative basis I'd like to see us try to spearhead over the next year or two. Thanks.
We're in full agreement on that, absolutely. Let's move on to the next item. It's a discussion about the continuing initiatives. Let's move over to staff report on that one, please.
Yeah, so we're going to start with the general plan update. So we have Simone Jurges, our community development director here to talk on that.
Good morning, Mayor Blom and city council members. Again, Simone Jurges, your community development director. So we're going to talk about the, just very briefly about the general plan update. General plan update is the largest advanced planning project the community development department is currently working on. And for the update itself, you know, there are several of your residents that have formed into committees. And so it's starting from the bottom there, the general plan advisory committee. That's a 30-member resident-based community group that has been formed and the council has ratified. They've had one meeting and they're starting to break out, we're starting to look at breaking them out to address other elements of the general plan. That group at the bottom there reports to the general plan steering committee that was already formed and approved by the city council. Those three members there of the steering committee and ultimately the steering committee reports back to the city council. So we are in full swing with the general plan update. Here is, you've got two kind of line graphs there. The top one is the schedule for the land use element. So what we're doing currently is we've taken our housing element and that housing element had all these housing opportunities. So now we take those housing opportunities, now we're going to plop them into our land use element and we got to make those elements consistent. That element is on a very strict timeline and we need to get the land use element adopted by the city council. We need the EIR to be completed and we need to be ready for, right now, we're looking at a vote of the California primaries in March 2024. So why do we do March 2024? Because it's the primary, it's not a special election. If we miss that March 24 deadline, we have to look at a special election which costs significant money. We'll go to a vote, we'll see how the residents, what they think about this land use element update with, with all these housing opportunities. We have to be done with this land use element update and implement all the housing element policies, the major policies by February 2025. So that's our drop dead deadline. So that's what we're putting all our resources in, is that land use element side of things. The bottom graph there, that is all the other elements in your general plan, your natural resource element, your arts and cultural, your safety, your harbor, your recreation. That does not have a deadline. That is something that is going to, is, is up to the community and they're going to be working on it. Again, the general plan is a community-based document. It's the community writes this. From a staff standpoint, we're the facilitators, we, we provide the staff support and we bring in consultants that have the expertise. So that's it for my portion of the presentation. Happy to answer any questions of the general plan update.
Mayor Proton.
Real quick, when you say limited to housing units, so, I mean, the reason we need to go out to the vote on, of the people on this is green light. And obviously with the amount of housing units going in, it triggers green light pretty much everywhere it touches. So when we're talking about limited to housing units, I mean, some of these areas are going to be rezoned. I mean, if you've got commercial, it's going to be multi-use, et cetera. So what's the, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out, when we're talking about just limited to housing units, you mean like we're, we're just trying to get the land use element to comply with our housing element or are we actually looking at, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not fully understanding when you say limited to housing units, what that means.
Certainly, certainly. So the approach we're taking is that you have existing commercial in the general plan. That commercial is on the general plan standpoint, the square footage is not going to go away. From a, from a development standpoint, maybe the developer will demo that 50,000 square-foot office building and put housing. That 50,000 square foot right now of office, we're not going to get rid of that. That stays in the general plan. So the housing is just going to be an overlay. And we're doing this because it's simpler from the EIR standpoint versus how much commercial do we really need or not need, how much retail? We'll keep that commercial in place, work with our, our community groups and resident groups, make sure that they're okay with that and then move forward with it.
Okay. All right, I think I understand. Thanks.
Let's move on.
Good morning, Mayor Blom and members of the council. Natalie Basmudjin, your homeless coordinator, and I are going to give you an update this morning on the city's homeless outreach strategies with a particular focus on our staff and consultant activities in this area. Also, Acting Chief Cartwright and Lieutenant Vincellet are here as well to answer any questions you may have on this topic. The city continues to have two full-time dedicated staff members working on homeless outreach. That's Natalie, of course, beside me, and Officer Cynthia Carter. Their efforts are complemented by the Peninsula Enforcement Team, a team of officers led by Sergeant Gary Clemente. And despite their name, they actually work citywide on homeless outreach efforts. We also have an interdepartmental city team that meets every Thursday morning. And this, this is a staff team comprised of city managers, city attorneys, public works, police department, and recreation and senior services. And every week we get together, we talk through the activities of that week, work through solutions together and talk about what's coming up and out in the field for that coming week. In the past year, at the direction of the former council ad hoc, we formed a new group called the Homeless Solutions Collaborative. And this is a group that Natalie pulls together about every month or every other month. And they are comprised, it's a group comprised of faith leaders in our community and community leaders with an expertise in homeless outreach services. So example, the head of Spin or Share Ourselves would come and attend the meetings. And the purpose is twofold. One is to give them an in-depth look at what the city's services are providing. For example, the other day, they came in and heard from Be Well and how they might use Be Well services at their churches, but also to hear from them what they're working on in terms of homeless outreach and how we might work together moving forward. The first two meetings have been incredibly productive. They have been very receptive to working with us and we're really looking forward to see how this group grows in the coming year. We also have in the past six months really enhanced some of our community outreach, again, of having some discussions with the former ad hoc and community members. They wanted more information on what we're doing in this area. So we've added a few tools to our website. If a resident were to go to our website and just search under homelessness, the page comes up. We have a homeless data dashboard that we now update every month, providing information and numbers on what we're doing out in the field. We also now have a quarterly report we put together every three or four months. Obviously, we put together this report reflecting back on the activities of the prior quarter. We have in the city manager's weekly newsletter, Natalie puts together an update every week. And we also now, Natalie's put together some community workshops, workshops that have some of our consultants such as Be Well or CityNet come and talk to the community directly about what they're doing out in the field for us. I'm going to skip over city contracted services because Natalie's going to give you a more in-depth look at that next. But we also continue to work at the county-wide level. Newport Beach is a member of the Central SPA, which is the nickname, which is the central service planning area. So we coordinate, Natalie and Officer Carter have meetings with other cities and in the Central SPA, they also work with the county. One of the areas that we've worked with the county for many years is the county does a ride along with our police department on a weekly basis. They send a member of their county psychiatric, emergency and response team to provide in-depth mental health services out in the field for Newport Beach. Some of the state and federal programs continue and we continue to participate in theirs. We still have about four or five folks that are experiencing homelessness in Newport Beach that are still holding their emergency housing vouchers. We had about 10 or 11 originally. These folks are still waiting for a housing placement and Natalie and Officer Carter and CityNet are actively working to try to find them housing. We also had two motel conversions under Project Room Key, correct, is it Home Key? Home Key, I always get it backwards, excuse me, Home Key this year. And one of those, HB Oasis, is a location that Newport Beach has been able to place about nine of our homeless, people experiencing homelessness into HB Oasis in the past few months. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Natalie to talk more about our, our contractors and consultants.
Good morning, Mayor Blom and members of the city council. I am Natalie Basmudjin, your homeless services coordinator. The first service that I'd like to review is our Be Well Mobile Crisis Unit, otherwise known as the Hope Team. We are one of five cities in the county that operates the mobile mental health team. Our service model is a bit different than the other four cities. Rather than reactively waiting for police and fire dispatch calls, we've tasked the team with proactively engaging with our people experiencing homelessness every day. You may see the number of contacts at just above 2,500 contacts. That is duplicate contacts. An example of that is every morning I've tasked the team with starting at the Newport Transportation Center to see if they can encourage people that day to go to shelter or social service appointments. So that is not 2,500 unique individuals, that is the total for all of their outreach. The team operates seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So they are able to help somebody first thing in the morning and then pretty much up until 7:00 PM. They've conducted 272 transports that could be to social services, hospital care, and as you see, lower shelter intakes, crisis stabilization unit intakes, sobering station intakes. And those are important transports because they're taking the burden off of our police and fire first responders to take that call all the way through. They also have a very quick response time because they're already on the road in the city. Their response time average is about 11 minutes to come on scene. So with the crisis stabilization and sobering station intakes, they operate a campus in the city of Orange, the Be Well Campus. They have two different crisis stabilization units at that campus, one for adolescents and one for adults. So children can get specialized care and not be in an adult environment. And then the sobering station intakes, they operate a campus in the city of Orange, the And then the sobering station intakes is a 23-hour intake. And once the person is there and sobers up and gets a meal, they're encouraged to go into a long-term residential care program at the Be Well Campus. Finally, the Be Well team in Newport Beach was able to reunify five people back to their origins. Two, a couple went back to Tennessee, a couple went back to Nevada, and an elderly man was reunified with his family in LA County. CityNet is our social services contractor. They provide the bulk of our outreach and engagement in the city. We have two case managers that work very closely with Officer Cynthia Carter, our homeless liaison with the police department. Again, their contacts are over 700. Some of those may be duplicate contacts to build trust and rapport, to learn people's names, and to ultimately determine what services that person needs. CityNet facilitated 20 shelter intakes. I'll go into shelter in a bit more later. They have been the lead agency to permanently house 14 people from our city. As Tara mentioned, we had nine interim housing placements at HB Oasis. Two of those nine people are now in permanent supportive housing, and they've left the interim for two more people to take their spots. And most recently, right around Christmas, they collaborated with Hoag Hospital Social Service Department to enroll a man in assisted living. He uses a wheelchair and he was not able to conduct his daily life activities that way. They enrolled 63 new people in 2022. They have 31 active cases. That difference is people that are housed will now have a closed case with CityNet, or they may have gone 90 days with no contact if the person left Newport Beach. And then finally, if somebody decided to go to the shelter, the case management may be turned over to the shelter operator and not be on CityNet's caseload anymore. So our Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter opened for our intakes in May of 2021, opened to Costa Mesa guests in April of 2021. Last year, they permanently housed seven people. Most of those were the voucher holders that Tara mentioned. They facilitated two family reunifications right around Thanksgiving, which was nice to see that the two people got to go home. And the occupancy tends to be 18 to 20 people every day, which accounts for over 4,300 bed nights at the shelter that people are not sleeping on our streets and benches. Additionally, Officer Carter has taken the lead on eight or nine of our placements where the person trusted Officer Carter more than CityNet. That does happen. You build a rapport with somebody, you're their primary point of contact. And then I was the lead on one of them. But it takes a team to do this. I could get that person all the way through the care process, signing paperwork, but ultimately, that person trusted Officer Carter to go to the leasing signing appointment. So that's a separate number from where CityNet takes the lead to represent those nine people. And then finally, through our Public Works Department, we have our Trellis International Community Impact Team. These are people that volunteer to participate in a return-to-work program. They earn gift cards for their participation as their form of payment. In 2022, that team completed 111 projects. We have people that are street-level homeless, sheltered homeless, and also newly housed that participate in that project.
And the last slide we have for you is the city continues to look toward and invest in a site, we hope, for permanent supportive housing in our own community. About two years ago, we set aside about $3 million for such a project and went through an RFP process. And since that time, Jamboree Housing and National Community Renaissance, two vendors, have been working with Simone Georges and Lauren Whitlinger to identify a site within Newport Beach that actually, frankly, pencils out, where we could actually have such a project here. So that work does continue, but they have yet to be able to find a site that is viable. And with that, staff is available to take any questions you may have.
Oh, and just maybe to wrap it up a little bit, I want to start with, you can see the amount of work we're doing, and it's still not enough. I mean, we know, we also, as I know the council gets a lot of comments and concerns from the public. We see the homeless numbers out there. It moves up and down, and that's a challenge too. It's not a fixed number that, you know, is a closed-off number and will help people, but then other, you know, people fall into housing homelessness. And it's a complex issue. We know that we have to work at it in multiple angles. That's why we have the variety of service providers that we work with. We know we need to have the long-term solutions, but at the same time, also work on short-term fixes as well. Enforcement is definitely a part of all of our efforts too, of the laws that we have on the books, but also being mindful of what the courts have allowed and not allowed through all of that. And so we will continue to be managing through this. We need to keep doing better. We're working through on doing that. And I know it's a frustrating issue at times, and it doesn't have that quick, easy fix. And I know everybody knows that, but I think it's just worth reiterating that, again, for the community, for the council, and our staff is certainly very much aware on this. Oh, and then, so, and then you did see on the one slide that we are taking up 18 to 20 of our shelter beds. So we continue to look for additional shelter beds, working on that. And on the permanent supportive housing, while land is so expensive here, I have certainly made reach out to some of neighboring cities that would make sense to do partnerships there for permanent supportive housing projects there. So we will continue to work through all of those. And I also have a good partnership with our OCTA and Irvine Company in dealing with our transportation center site, which, you know, has been a continual area to be worked on. So we're working, you know, kind of on all angles through all that.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much. That's quite the presentation, and we know it is a very serious and difficult problem to address. You know, and I think sometimes the misnomer of homelessness, we do understand that we are also dealing with, you know, some serious drug addiction and mental health issues that go beyond just people not having a house. And I think that's something that we're focusing on quite a bit as well with some of these other initiatives. And, you know, I will say before we turn it over to the rest of council up here, you know, when I was out in DC a couple weeks ago, we do possibly more than almost anyone else in this country, and everybody is dealing with this. You know, I sat through quite a few different presentations from all different cities throughout the United States, and I was amazed at how little most of them are doing. And I think, frankly, their weather is what inhibits it from getting out of control in other areas throughout the country. It's why California is at such a point right now. But I was blown away by some of the suggestions that they were making as we've already sat and initiated these suggestions and been working very hard on them for quite a long time. So let's bring it up here. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you so much for that presentation. And I would echo what Grace and Mayor Blum said, that the amount of work and resources that our city has already employed and invested to help with the homelessness situation is a huge amount, and it's greatly appreciated. And we can all, up here and I think in the community, see that it's a very organized, efficient, compassionate approach. And it is, there are great strides being made. These statistics are wonderful to see. And I guess, you know, we've worked together here as a council and with staff to, in these first few weeks, that we have a new council up here to kind of take stock of where we are and relook with fresh eyes at this kind of issue that does relate, you know, nationwide, worldwide, but definitely in our city, it is an important thing, not just for the residents, but for the homeless population as well. You know, finding the right mix of investment and outcome is, you know, constantly being looked at. But I am very impressed with the work that's being done across the board, especially when we're looking at making investments community-wide, because as much as we have a lot of resources in this city, it's not just our issue. So the takeaway that I would like to see happen from today is that we, I for one, would like to participate in the process of continuing this fresh look and maybe relooking at some stuff that we've already done and new stuff. But it is a huge amount of progress in just the last few years. If you look back maybe three years ago at this planning session, almost none of that was in place. And it is a credit to the council that was sitting here before, the staff that's been here, especially the staff Natalie and Officer Carter and the other staff members that are working on this. A huge amount of very efficient progress, and I look forward to being part of that progress moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagen.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just had a couple of questions on the slide. On the first part, it said Peninsula Enforcement Team. Is that part of the same thing as the ambassadors program, or is that separate?
The Peninsula Enforcement Team is a group within our police department.
Okay.
They're officers.
And then on the Be Well part, it said 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Why those hours and why not 24/7? Is it a safety issue, a funding issue? Is it just what's been determined as the best hours to be out?
We used our police and fire chiefs to help determine the best service hours to start. Be Well is flexible to changing those hours if our police and fire leadership see that we need it expanded. Huntington Beach was the first city to have the service, and they started with a one-van 12-hour model. They've expanded to two vans and 23 hours a day. They do not operate between 1:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. The city of Huntington Beach determined those were hours that were better suited for police and fire response.
Gotcha. And then you had a couple categories, you know, of homeless levels. Do we identify those that are sleeping in cars?
We don't have a fixed number on that. That number changes pretty much daily because of our parking regulations and no overnight parking signage that's throughout the city. That's a very hard number to determine. In some cases, it could even be like construction contractors or people coming in the city for early morning work that may be in a vehicle, but they're not necessarily experiencing homelessness.
So like our parks, can you, you cannot park there overnight in the parking spaces? Or it's kind of flexible as far as, you know, officer discretion on when they're looking against those vehicles?
Yeah, some of that might be officer discretion or the posted no parking signage coming into play.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, so, thanks, Eric. Look, we've been sitting up here, some of us, for a month now. And during the process of the campaign, there was nothing that was more relevant or important to the residents than dealing with homelessness. I think that's what makes Newport Beach such an amazing place to live, is we do have compassion for people, and there is no compassion for leaving somebody on the streets. And I do commend the work that city staff is doing and continues to do, but we have to do more. There's no doubt that we're not close to where we need to be. I echo the mayor's sentiments. We're doing a lot more than a lot of other neighboring cities. But I look at some of these people, whether it's mental health, addiction, there are success stories out there. Look in my district on the peninsula, we've done a great job with the peers. I was down there this morning, and it is much better than it was. And Natalie, that's a lot of credit to you and Officer Cynthia Carter. There's clearly a bottleneck when it comes to permanent housing. We can, we can spend a million dollars a year on a shelter that's been open for two years, or just over a year, that is, I guess. And the reality is, some of those people have been there since day one. We shouldn't be responsible or continue to be put in a position where we've got to build enough shelters for everybody to support for the next 10 years or 20 years. So I think continuing to work like you guys are on permanent housing solutions, I know that's a regional solution probably, and I commend you guys for continuing to go down that path. The transportation center is something, clearly all of us are getting a lot of emails and phone calls for good reason. In recent meetings with Cynthia Carter and Natalie and Tara and others, it's important to know that there was some enforcement action taken on Friday. I've seen photos where all 15 tents were removed. They were offered shelter. Four of them took it, others did not. But for a period of time, there were no tents there, and they were back the next day. So I think it's important to know that the city is doing a lot. We can do more, and we will. But it's important to realize that there is some success stories out there we need to continue to work on. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about my area, my neighborhood on the west side of Newport Beach. I've been dealing with this since the day I moved into my home two years ago. There are RVs and cars parked on my street, down by river and seashore, and it's just, it's unacceptable. I mean, these guys, I know of one in particular who has an RV, and he has a Prius, and he goes to work, and he comes back to his RV, and he's literally living on the street, and he has been for over two years. So that's just the direction we're talking about, long-range planning. It's just something that, I got an email today from somebody who's on Old Newport. So I know there's some success stories over there as well, so I'd love to just have staff continue to focus on the west side. I think sometimes it gets overlooked. There's not a lot of streetlights. It's a lot of surfers and other things, but there are certain issues down there that we need to continue to focus on. But all that being said, continue to move forward. I would love to be, like Councilwoman Grant had mentioned, I'd love to be part of the leadership from the dais, continue to focus on this. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Grant.
Just one last question. A big piece of this is the permanent supportive housing that we apparently have resources to employ to build, but we, I mean, I heard about this in several council, you know, study sessions going back. And I realize how absolutely impossible it is to find, you know, the, just the right mix of property and location and all of that. But I'm wondering, because this has been going on for a while, I've not really heard anything about, have we looked at particular sites and like maybe even made an offer or gone into, has there been any like concrete progress on that, or has it just basically been nothing the whole time along?
We've been through, and I certainly can have our community development director, Simone Georges, talk a little bit further, but it's been pretty extensive search. They go through the inventory of all the parcels out there, figure out which ones would kind of, you know, penciling out the numbers through, making all the, I think there's been cold calls, I think there's been relationship building to look at each of the properties, and probably have Simone talk a little further to that, but the work's been pretty extensive.
So we are working with Jamboree and Core, and they're the affordable housing developers. And what they've done, as the city manager has stated, they've actually made offers and issued LOIs. I think the biggest challenge that the affordable housing developers have is the land bases in Newport are so high that they can't make anything pencil. And the affordable housing developers say, I only can pay X. Well, that property owner says, well, I could probably make more money as a market-rate housing project, or even change it over to some type of other retail use. So that's what the challenges have been, and that's the feedback we've gotten for affordable housing developers, is that it's just very expensive to do affordable housing in Newport Beach when you're trying to acquire land. As Grace mentioned, that probably the better look at this is to look at it regionally, partner with other adjoining cities, look outside Newport. Maybe that's a better way to go, maybe because the land base is a little bit cheaper and more affordable for the affordable housing developers.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't want to be redundant and repeat everything that we've already heard up here, but the one thing that is worth repeating is the sentiment that we have an incredible team and our staff has done just a tremendous job in tackling such a really complex and sensitive issue. Again, I've been super impressed, Natalie, you know, what you do every day in making an impact on this is amazing. And what we, some of us heard yesterday in our meeting with the police department, particularly Cynthia's efforts, also just incredible. So I do want to make sure that, you know, we're showing appreciation for all of that and recognizing that we know that you have made great strides. And really, I think what we're looking to do, particularly those of us who have expressed interest in being involved in trying to help address this issue, is how we can continue to support your efforts and looking, you know, beyond the city, as Simone just mentioned, but also in other resources. What more can and should the county be doing? And again, how can we as council members assist in that? And even beyond, you know, we're hearing things from our administration that there's a lot of attention being paid to this and that there should be some support there as well. So I'll just kind of reiterate what Councilwoman Stapleton and Councilwoman Grant said. This is something that is certainly a priority for me. Staff knows I've spent a lot of time researching and just talking to other to other neighboring jurisdictions and some outside of our county even, just understanding what other areas are doing, what's working for them, what's not working, other tools that we can give you to make your job easier. And of course, you know, try to mitigate this problem, again, not just for our Newport Beach residents as a whole, but of course, this, this community that really does need assistance on so many levels. So I just want to again, just say thank you for all that you've done and continue to do.
Thank you. Mayor Proton O'Neill.
Yeah, just real quick. To Robin's point, yeah, there's, there's been a lot done in the last few years, but obviously a long way to go. So my guess is that I could probably speak for Brad on this one and say, really excited to have fresh eyes on this one. We've, we sort of have gone through the, the timing of a lot of the improvements and programmatic improvements were going on during a time when a lot of cities in the county and were getting sued left and right. And Newport was able to stay out of that, those crosshairs, in large part because of some of the programs we've been doing. So the, the time, we're in a very different place now than we were three, four, five years ago in, in terms of our ability to continue to make strides. So 100%, we can do better. Looking forward, honestly, to seeing how we can do better. And I, you know, I appreciate the, the efforts that a lot of folks put in beforehand to get us here, but man, yeah, we, we definitely need to be doing better. So I do appreciate the fresh perspectives and eyes and open to anything. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I am, I feel really good about our new council members and their interest in this subject and fresh eyes on the, on the subject. And, you know, it's tough, because I think we, all of us up here, and certainly those of us that have been up here a little longer, we've really gotten, over the years, hot letters from folks, you know, just emails that are just all lit up and coming after us, going after the homeless. And it's, it's tough to see that. I never want to get complacent about those letters. You know, they, they're reflecting to me sort of what's out there in our community. And there's, quite frankly, there's a lot of anger. And I think that anger comes from fear, and it's very difficult to be in our community and see suffering in front of us when we go by the tents, when we go by people standing on a, like, I go by the guy that stands at the end of Dover and PCH all the time. There's rotating folks there. So I think it's important to recognize that, where that comes from, you know, the anger and the, and the fear. And it's important to just take a couple steps back and understand that this problem is not going away in our lifetimes, and it's a problem that needs to be managed and to manage to the best degree that we can, which I feel we've been doing. And I, and for anyone, it's not fast enough. It's not, you know, we just want, we, I think all of us agree, we don't want anyone suffering in our community if we can help it. And that's what we're trying to do. That's basically what it is. It's just managing. And our team, on all levels, is, I think, has been very good at it. But I totally get, and we all get, the frustration. But I think with new folks on the council, and this is, Mr. O'Neill and I were talking about the benefits of term limits, it's important to get new people on who want to tear into things and say, hey, look, I want to dig into this and see if we can find some other solutions. So that's what I'm hopeful about. That's our greatest hope, really, is the electorate in this town electing the right people to counsel and folks that are going to take up the mantle on these issues that will be in front of new councils for generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Avery. Okay. Just before we jump into the excitement of aviation in just a second, something lighter. That's great. I want to apologize to Mr. Stapleton for parking my RV in front of his house. I promise I'll move it soon. And I, Councilmember Grant, I like the, the idea of the fresh look. I think that is a great initiative. And, you know, I do think we'll touch into some of these pieces when we start getting into the CIP as well, that a lot of this, I do believe we have some areas that are more problematic than others in this city. And sometimes it's not just about sending more response units out, it's about infrastructure projects that change the face of those areas that are being able to allow people to sleep there, utilize, you know, the bathrooms, and really kind of create their own campground. And so I think sometimes there are other plans, and there are other options. And sometimes it's about reinvesting in the city with some new projects. And I think we've identified some of our major areas of concern, like McFadden Square and the Bus Depot. And we would love to reinvest in those areas to make it much less attractive to start putting up a tent or camping there and find some alternatives to what we can start putting in those areas. And we do need the community support for those types of things, because we will be spending money to do it that isn't directly related to homelessness. It's related to the infrastructure and the overall quality of the city, but I think it's excessively important if we're going to start combating this from every angle. And I do think those are some of the fresh looks. Just a quick note on Trellis. And we've seen, actually, I've been very surprised, and I've gotten amazing feedback from some of the residents on Balboa Island about some of the people that have been working for Trellis, kind of going around cleaning the island. They're working, you know, very well. And I just wanted to throw that out there. I was very surprised. And I'm in full support of anything we can do to focus on the regional permanent supportive housing. I think, you know, we've exhausted the idea and the search for land within Newport Beach. We're, we're geographically limited here. We, we already exhausted that when we were looking at the RENA numbers. And so it's time to start looking at some other land that the city could possibly purchase outside, that we can use those funds for and put something in that would be a benefit where we have the ability to send people. So that's, oh, Councilmember Wigan.
I just had a question. Since this is my first study meeting on item four, we're on addressing homelessness, is it, after all of them will be addressed, then public will get a chance?
That's correct. We're going to go through all the initiatives and then bring it out to public comment at that point.
Just here. Okay, thanks.
Just so we have a chance to kind of wrap through. Okay, beautiful. Let's, let's move.
Six minutes in.
Dennis, I think you've already had six, so let's, let's give you another three. I think you'll enjoy it. Perfect. Wonderful. Let's roll into aviation real quickly, quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. In following Council Policy A17, which is your aviation-related policy, and the legislative platform, which we'll talk about next, aviation or the city's efforts to protect our community from the impacts of John Wayne Airport has traditionally and continues to be a chief priority of the city. And of course, core to that priority is the 1985 settlement agreement and making sure that we protect and keep that agreement in place. The agreement terms are still, they will continue through, most of the terms will expire in 2030. The curfew term expires in 2035. And while that may seem like it's years away, it's actually not when we need to renegotiate a settlement agreement of this caliber. We usually start at least several years in advance. So at the staff level and even with the aviation committee, we've been talking for probably the last year or so about, hey, we need to start getting ready to renegotiate this agreement, maybe building up community support and awareness. And then earlier, excuse me, at the end of 2022, we met with Mayor Blom, and we expressed staff's concern that we feel we need to start working on this sooner than later, that this is so important. We need to start our research and planning just to prepare to start this renegotiation process. And Mayor Blom wholeheartedly agreed. He encouraged us to start that. And he would actually like us to start talking to the aviation committee about that Monday night. We would like to invest the resources that we have, staff resources. We still have our city attorney, city manager, myself, and other staff members directly involved in this issue, and that will not change. We will continue to do that. And we have consultant resources as well. We have an airspace consultant, an aviation noise consultant, and lobbyists that work on this issue with us. We intend to keep all of them, of course, moving forward this year, working on this important endeavor. And as I said, we'd like to talk to the aviation committee this Monday night about kind of trimming back their priorities. We have a robust and very involved aviation committee. They're fantastic. And they tackle about 15 priorities a year. We are going to talk to them about scaling that back a bit this year and have them focus on government relations and communication, education, and general aviation, because that's very important now to our community, and really allow us to use some of our staff and consultant resources to, again, begin this work to, what do we need to put in place to renegotiate this settlement agreement? So that is the staff update. Mayor Blom, did you have anything to add? And we also would welcome council comments on that. And Mayor Blom?
Of course. So, you know, part of, I, I love a robust committee. And I think sometimes if our arms get too wide, we lose the ability to focus on individual items. And when I was looking through, you know, why this committee was originally formed and kind of what its mandate was, it was to negotiate this settlement agreement and make sure that it is in place with so much committee, or I mean, community approval and input. And when you start looking at something, especially negotiating a major contract that affects all of Newport Beach and really is the linchpin for how we interact with the airport, is the settlement agreement. And, you know, I think it's been great. I see Sue out there as well. She's spent a lot of time transitioning from the city side of this aviation committee and really diving in amazingly onto the county side. And as most of you know, in aviation, the county controls the airport. We are the noisy wheel underneath the airport that would very much like to have controlled it, but unfortunately, that is not our role here. Our role is to make sure that they do not go beyond their mandate of what our settlement agreement put forth. So with our focus being that, basically ensuring that our priorities get to be wholeheartedly enforced, this agreement is really how that happens. You know, we can, we can look at a lot of other pieces, but without this, we lose so much of it. And so that's why I really kind of wanted to align the aviation committee to focus on what's going to be the most important moving into the future. You know, I always say it's great when we talk about the present, but if we're not planning for the future, then we've already lost the battle. And then we'll keep up on some of the key components that I think are very important, you know, that the community has addressed the most and most often within, which are the noise incidents, the abatement, and then the government relations and advocacy. And some of those are more difficult than not. You know, I would like to say that the federal government's agencies love to listen to the city of Newport Beach, but that doesn't always seem to be the case. It seems like they very often like to do what is mandated by Congress more than what is wanted by the communities. And so we'll continue our advocacy on those points, but I think it's always important to build a backstop that we can build off of, rather than focusing on some of the other things that are still important but have less of a necessary mandate, especially with a time constraint that we're looking at. So that's, that's kind of the idea of where we're looking for aviation. Let me bring it up here. Councilmember Grant.
I also want to highlight the fact how fortunate we are to have somebody from our community who's very well-educated on this, very passionate about this, and very invested in having the city of Newport Beach have a place at the table at the county level. Having Sue DeVorac as a representative on the county board is going to provide a measurable amount of good results for, for us for the settlement agreement. And I would wholly support any, any kind of interaction that Sue wants to have with us to support her. But we should acknowledge that that's a big piece of it. We don't, we didn't have somebody else, I think, from Newport on the board for quite a while. And it's really impressive that you, you got that appointment, Sue. So, bravo.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I do think it's also important to mention, as Robin said, you know, prior to Sue getting on there, there really wasn't much at the county that even cared about the airport. And since that started, you know, it's gotten more and more robust. So I encourage all members that are concerned about aviation, you know, that are both on our committee, you know, or even a lot of the things that they've addressed with the city of Newport Beach, to start addressing to the county and start moving into that. Show up at those meetings for the county and do the same advocacy you have done here. And as we kind of narrow our focus to what is going to help us, you know, we'll keep that liaison relationship available with Sue so that we can use some of our community support and start focusing you guys over there, so we can really advocate to those who own the airport. And I think that's really how we can use the robust angle of our community and start cycling them into the county. I think it could really be helpful to Sue as well. So, Councilmember Wigan.
An issue that really isn't affecting Newport Beach, or not an issue, but a topic that doesn't really usually relate to Newport Beach, but has environmental justice ever been looked at related to airport noise and emissions at a, you know, a concrete federal level, you know, to say that it isn't just a little small airport. It is a pretty significantly sized airport with a lot of activity overhead. And, you know, environmental justice usually isn't something Newport Beach has a discussion on, but when it comes to the airport, we are significant in that, in that area.
I'm looking at the city attorney, and he's gently shaking his head, no. Environmental issues, of course, are often come up in the FAA reauthorization, air quality and noise. But Aaron seems to say no environmental justice has not been a leading effort to date.
Yeah, I think that's right. And I think we're going to be going back to talk to the FAA, so maybe that's something we can take a look at as part of that.
Thank you. Wonderful. Councilmember Grant.
One other thing that I wanted to mention that's happened, it's been very robust recently, is we do have a new airport director. And I personally have seen her in the community quite a bit here in Newport Beach, speaking at our local groups, our chambers, our community groups. And it might not seem, you know, it might seem very broad about what she's speaking about, but just the fact that we have a new airport director that is interested in coming into our community and sharing with us and has an open door policy is a good sign. And I think combined with the efforts that staff is making to accelerate the settlement agreement negotiations and new people that are going to be from up here on the aviation committee and having somebody on the board, you know, these are all great pieces. Nothing happens overnight, but it seems like we're getting situated for a good, good run at it. So I'm encouraged also by this new airport director who has been very present in our community right, right, right out of the gate.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Let's move on.
And the last item I have for you today is the legislative platform. The platform is a policy document that guides the city's county, state, and federal advocacy efforts. It is actually a direction from council to staff on how we can go out and work with our consultants to, again, work on our federal advocacy and legislative matters. It has guiding principles and issue areas that very clearly define what the council's interests are and what we should support, and frankly, what we should oppose at times. It was last updated in 2019, so it is time to update the document again. And staff anticipates coming back to you with revisions to consider in late February, February 28th at your meeting. It also is, like I said, something we use when we're working with our federal and county and state lobbyists. And we have two currently under contract. We work with Carpe and Clay at the federal level. They specifically are working on dredging Army Corps issues with us and also aviation matters back in Washington, DC. We also now have Townsend Public Affairs under contract to help us with county and state government relations. If something is outside, I should note for the record that if something is outside of the platform, that doesn't mean we don't work on it. Council members have in the past brought forward such an item under Council Policy A1 for the council to discuss. And at times, you will see staff will come forward with a staff report for you to consider adding an item for us to work on that calendar year. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Wonderful. Councilmember Wigan.
Yes, thank you. I noticed some areas that were missing, so I would like to see if maybe we can take a look at that when we get those opportunities, and mostly in the public safety area. There's not much discussion on, you know, property crime. We're seeing a pretty big surge in that. Maybe there's some areas there to look at. Wildfire mitigation, you know, that's a big topic in Sacramento. And I know Newport Coast kind of has a lot of significant areas there that they're having a discussion with, with our fire marshal. And, you know, human trafficking, Newport Beach is unfortunately a destination for that, so that could be something to look at. Sentence enhancements on fentanyl, we just passed a resolution the other day on that. I know our legislative partners are trying to get that seen as a high-level offense, because cocaine, heroin, methamphetamines, they're all at a higher level, and fentanyl's down here. So I'd like to, you know, support our legislative folks. And then potentially some discussion on e-bikes. You know, that's a big, big thing in our neighborhoods, you know, helmets. Are the kids wearing proper equipment? Are they going proper speeds? Is there licensing, things like that? So I think public safety kind of has a missing piece in this document that I didn't see too much discussion on.
Mayor Proton O'Neill.
Yeah, when we bring it back, it might be also worth trying to figure out how to, how to talk about direct conversations between individual council members with the advocacy consultants. And I'm going back to probably my first year on council. One of the things that we had realized in terms of having more difficult dialogue with our coastal commission folks was, it turned out that we had a council member or two that were having side conversations with our consultant, and our consultant took, had the impression that that was kind of almost like direction from council when it was, when it was not. And so I, and And so I, and I'm sure the same thing comes up from time to time with federal consultants and whatnot, too. So it might be worth, might be worth making sure we have a, an explanation because, you know, the, the stuff's tricky and complicated, and I want to make sure that, that we have a majority of council advocating for a direction, that that's, that is how, that's what's being advocated for by our consultants going forward. So, like I said, kind of going back to my first days, something I probably should have had us review back in 19, so I'd like to make sure we, we, we take a look at that. And, you know, nothing wrong with having council members talking with consultants, but we've got to make sure that the consultant knows where the direction of council is. So we should probably have some kind of parameter set around that. Thanks.
Wonderful. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Wigan mentioned. I would definitely like to see an emphasis on items relating to public safety, including, as he mentioned, the fentanyl issue. I know we're kind of probably already working on residential care reform in protection of particularly those residents living in those facilities, that, you know, we really don't have any assurance are, are being given the proper quality of care. Something else I would love to see is some attention given to the visa waiver program. We've obviously seen a lot locally and also in the news, issues relating to residential burglaries from groups that are coming in from other countries on these tourism visas, on these 30-day, 30-day visa waiver scenarios. And I would really like to kind of do some research and understand if that's something worth pursuing, if, if there is a direct correlation to, you know, when these countries whose nationals are perpetuating these crimes, if there's data to support, you know, an increase since they were added to that waiver program. Because obviously, there's very little vetting associated with them coming across our borders. In addition to that, I think funding and grants would be a focus that I would like us to look at, particularly, as we talked earlier, homelessness initiatives. There seems to be money out there, you know, whether we could get that earmarked for Newport, I don't know. A lot of money just given to CalOptima that, again, would really be nice to take advantage of and, and I'll try to use that to assist our homeless population. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Back to Wigan.
Sorry, I wanted to ask one more question. It's come up a lot from either council members or members of the public so far, but as far as grants and the funding through grants, do we in-house, and forgive my not knowing, do we, do we have an in-house grants person, or do we contract out with a, a firm that does most of the searching for federal and state grants?
We don't have just one position that's just like a grants person, but we have a different staff in different departments that are focused in these areas. And I'm thinking the public works. We do look in several areas, so it's, it's not just one person's entire duties, but there, there's focuses across the departments in that. And we will utilize our, I'm looking over at Tara, in some of our areas where it makes sense that we want to be advocating, you know, at, at the state level or the federal level for, for funding sources, we'll, we'll utilize our lobbyists and other staff members. Did you want to add to that?
Police and fire actually will, under contract, excuse me, fire, will occasionally contract with a grant writer to support some of the grants that they're pursuing.
And the grant writer does the legwork, too, but who finds the grants? Mostly just interdepartmental staff, or is, because there are firms also out there that specialize specifically, if you, you know, obtain them, to hunt for them and then get them. So, but we have our feelers out, you know, obviously through our federal and state consultants, but, you know, is that their primary focus, or is their primary focus more on doing the legislative stuff, lobbying on our behalf? We've heard a couple of folks mention it. Are we doing every single thing we can? I'm sure we are, but is there more we could do in that department of obtaining those funds?
Yeah, but we can certainly look at that further.
Okay.
Wonderful. So, seeing no more dice comments, let's go out to public comments. All right, Dennis, don't worry, we're starting that. You got it. Go for it.
Thank you. I'm going to use the bigger table so I can lay some of our slides out here. Dennis Bress, resident, Balboa Island. What a breath of fresh air this morning has been. This council out of the shoots already, and the work that the previous councils have done. City of Newport Beach rocks, so we are really all firing on all cylinders. So congratulations to the new crew, and this is exciting. So what I wanted to talk about first was the last topic, which was John Wayne and what that airport has. I look what, like what you said, Mayor Blom, and now Chair of the Newport Beach Aviation Committee, along with Vice Chair with Lauren Kleiman, look forward to working with you guys starting Monday. But I like the new direction, and what we need to do is level set. And that is, we need to focus in on the fact that that airport is owned by the County of Orange, and it is their responsibility on how they conduct their business. And 97% of those departures come through our neighborhood, our hood. And living on Balboa Island, those planes, as most people under the departure corridor know, 7:00 AM, that's it. That's the morning bank. That's when we have to wake up because those aircraft are extremely loud. Their own data shows that there's a way that those aircraft, those jet aircraft can depart. And we've coined the phrase "high, slow, and quiet." And if you go up high and you're slow and not thrusting, you effectively have a quieter departure. That's their own access and noise office that supports that type of departure parameter. The problem has been, you're right, there was no one at the county that gave a damn about what was going on in regards to our neighborhood. Well, good news. We've got Supervisor Foley, District 5 now. And Supervisor Foley does care about what's happening here in our neighborhood. That's the good news. The other good news is what you alluded to, is that Sue DeVorek from our neighborhood is actually on the committee now with that organization. So we have a good structure now to actually do some good things. The first good news is the Supervisor Foley and staff had deployed the fly-friendly program. That's the first ever JWA-run operation that they pay staff to do, which is to, get this, amazing concept, monitor every single GA jet that departs. With those parameters, put them into some configurable system by which they're able to, and they can't, it's all voluntary, but they are at least doing the data analysis to show who's doing a good job and who's not. And then it's a community outreach program on their dime to get the pilots then updated on what they're doing and how well they're doing. So for anyone listening or watching any of this, if you live in Newport Beach, you can do what we called field observation. And that is, if you just sit down and watch departures, you're going to see departures that are high, slow, and quiet. And then the ones that come through that are noisy, we call them low, fast, and loud. You want more HSQ, less LFW. Just 30 more seconds.
Make it 10, and we got it done, Dennis. Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
Don't worry, we have time on Monday. We're going to keep talking airport.
Okay, well, this is going to end up for, just for the settlement.
Perfect.
I like how you're regrouping now, and we're focused on the settlement agreement. It's vitally important that we maintain that. And I will make one point. As the settlement agreement has been negotiated a number of times, the noise allotment and thresholds in the settlement agreement have been raised. So we need to actively, we want to keep the curfew, but if it's been looked at over these years and they've raised the noise limits, we need to look at lowering those noise limits. So these are all things we can talk about, the aviation committee. And then last thing for homelessness, Natalie and team, congratulations. What a great job. And I visited the site on my phone.
I was only three minutes per person today.
And it's amazing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
You get Dennis, too. My name is Dennis Baker. Good morning, Mayor Blum, and council members and staff. I have two unrelated questions or things, items that I'd like you to respond from staff to, or you. One is regarding how the homeless, is there any facility planned for facilities or anything to deal with hygiene? So this, we have, like, because we have beaches, we have showers, cold showers outside and that type of thing. But I have observed behind my house, people bathing at a, you know, the bib coming out of the back of the bank, that type of thing. I know that some people have gotten access to the shower down at the Harbor Patrol, that type of thing. But it's pretty random. It doesn't seem organized. And I'm very concerned because there's a secondary effect if people don't have access to good hygiene, and it's kind of gross, but, you know, if you're defecating in public, that's a health hazard and that type of thing. So I'd like that addressed if that's possible. And then the unrelated thing is, Councilmember Wagon, very briefly, it's just slipped through, made the word emissions regarding the airport. If you live in Coronet, Omar, you're very, very, very aware of the emissions from jet traffic. It takes about, I have surf skis, which are white, in my carport, so it's under a cover. It takes about a week to two weeks before they will be completely coated with a film of kerosene. So, I mean, I literally reached up to pick them up, and it just comes down, and I have a nice coating of kerosene on it. That's not coming from PCH. So I think that emissions is something that has come up over the last 30 years. There's been studies and so on regarding emissions from jet aircraft, but it always kind of, it's like we don't know where to go with it. So I'm wondering if there's anything regarding emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor Blum, council. Welcome. New faces. Nancy Scarborough, I would like to talk just briefly back to the homeless issue. I want to point out that we had made a presentation to the council for a new housing trust. This is a really unique group. It's very diverse. It consists of developers and SPON, which are not usually groups that talk to each other. And we have put together a housing trust. We're very close to final documentation on that. We are beginning fundraising. The housing trust will be able to apply for grants that the city cannot apply for, county, state, and federal grants, for money that could be used to purchase property or provide low-interest loans on property that would be able to be then used for permanent supportive housing or other types of affordable housing, which will also tick away at our RENA requirement for affordable housing, which is outrageously high. So that is just another tool. We look forward to collaborating with the city on this. The first grant, I believe, begins, applications are due sometime in March, and I think it has to be finalized by May. So it's coming up pretty quickly, and we are working on it. That's just an FYI. And then regarding the airport, I wanted to mention that there are three signers on that settlement agreement, the city, the county, and SPON. SPON has been working diligently. We have an aviation committee on SPON, and just recently, we are looking for a new consultant, a new attorney to retain, to help us do research in addition to the research that the city and the county are doing. So there will be three parties to that, and I think if we work together, I think we have a really good opportunity and a lot of willing participants that maybe in the past haven't been quite so willing to work with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'll be brief, just following up on what she said. For those at home, they can find out more information on the Newport Beach Housing Trust at NewportBeachHousingTrust.org. My name is Charles Klob, current president of SPON. Point out to you that Townsend Public Affairs regularly posts on social media their successes at helping their clients raise money or get grants at the state level. I don't know if they're engaged for that with us, but they do provide that service. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blum and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Going through these items in reverse order, regarding the airport, I have a concern about that similar to the one that Mayor Protam O'Neill mentioned with regard to the legislative platform. It appears to me that the aviation committee is being told that they have a new mandate, a new direction, and they're being told that on Monday without themselves having been asked their view of what they should be doing, or the full council having given any direction as to what the aviation committee should be doing. I think that's disturbing. Regarding our homeless response, this is not at all a solution, it's accommodation separately to our staff. I don't know if it was clear from their presentation, but our homeless coordinator maintains on the city website a dashboard where the public who are interested in our response to the homeless situation can see monthly the statistics of what happened during that past month. She has been keeping that up and up to date for the last year nearly, which is more than one can say for some other city efforts that start with good intentions and then get neglected and are not kept up to date. Mostly, I want to comment about the general plan update, which you heard a very brief presentation about at the beginning of this segment. I don't know if you're aware of that or not because it was on the consent calendar. I am actually one of those 30 people that was selected to be on the advisory committee. I have some concerns about that, and I think we're lacking clear direction from you as to what we are supposed to be doing. One thing that bothers me is generally, if one's updating a general plan, one wants a lot of public outreach. The steering committee went through a request for proposals process for a outside consultant that could be coordinating that. We heard at our very first meeting, which was a little over a week ago, that the consultant had not been hired yet. So I was surprised when I looked at our bid portal on the city website to discover that the RFP request had been canceled. I don't know what the status of that is. We also heard that the land use element is being rewritten by the consultant who wrote the housing element, and the committee members assigned to that will basically just be inventing policies to justify adding the houses, which appear to be a very large number, because you heard on Tuesday the report about inclusionary housing. I asked a question there that was not answered. We heard that the market itself would be producing affordable housing at the rate of between 5 and 8%, kind of 7 being an average, and we need to provide 3,688 homes in that category. If I divide that by 7%, it sounds like the market will have to deliver 52,686 homes in the next eight years, and we will have to invent policies to justify that. I don't think that's a good direction to go in. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker.
Lee Pearl with Balboa Island. I never thought I'd come up here again with another comment, but Councilmember Wigan really hit it on the nose. There's millions of dollars available out there now. And can you imagine, as a city council, if you could bring $20 million to the Balboa Island seawall that the residents didn't have to pay for? So I want to, I just want to compliment the, the new ideas of the council, and we need to really look at funds for, not just for our capital projects, but bringing the best technology to Newport Beach, police department, fire department, other agencies, modern fleets using energy-efficient technology. There is a lot of money out there, and I think we need to really focus this year on getting as much as possible. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Wigan? Or do we have any other public comments? Perfect. Councilmember Wigan, bring it up here.
All right, it came up again, the grants thing. So as Nancy Scarborough had mentioned, you know, they have their trust that they're working on. Can the city, while we're not, you know, loosely partnered, we haven't made any agreement or anything related to the trust, but can the city also do grants that then inform the public, say, you know, they're not city-based grants, but they might be beneficial to another organization or a city resident or any type of... organization or a city resident or any type of group, so that we are finding these grants, but then we're notifying the public that they exist, not through the city, but through other channels that are not. So that could be an angle to look at as well.
Yeah, yeah, I have it on my notes to look generally too for us and in a focused effort of looking for the grants. So that could be a part of it too, not just for the city itself, but for the impacted parties, yeah.
Wonderful. And then to address Mr. Mosher's comments, we're not looking to railroad the airport committee. And so, you know, I would like to look for council direction on kind of the new priorities we're looking for, for the airport to negotiate the settlement agreement that we could be, you know, kind of where we stand there if we're in agreement to, you know, refining our mandate, so that we can then propose that to the airport committee. Is that something we can find? Aaron?
Can you take a straw vote, just to raising hands?
Everyone in agreement?
What do we, just can you restate what we're voting on?
The priorities that were defined, looking at the airport committee, focusing in on the settlement agreement, noise abatement, kind of refining that purpose. I just wanted to address it for Jim, so he didn't feel that, you know, we were, we were just making a mandate for them from here.
So we're voting to get?
It's just basically providing, you know, is there general support for that proposition?
Okay.
Can I just add to, would that kind of involve some of the stuff that I mentioned too? And Dennis Baker had mentioned about emissions and things like that too, or is that kind of a separate category?
I think it's a separate category. And just kind of circle back to your environmental justice question. I mean, there is some general policies with the FAA about environmental justice. I don't think they've ever done a real in-depth look at environmental justice related to JWA, but it does involve mainly, you know, kind of minorities and poor communities. So that's something we can take a look at, but I wanted to clarify that comment.
Great, thanks. And I'm still, thank you.
I'm sorry, if you can repeat the straw vote, please. Is that unanimous? Thank you, unanimous?
Wonderful. Okay, excellent. Should we take a little break before, or how are we feeling out here on the dais? I like that kind of attitude. Perfect. All right, next item is a discussion about the capital improvement program. So before we begin, I want to make sure we address any conflict issues. The best way to handle this, I believe, is if we have staff if needed, and then any council member address their conflicts, and then we'll ask that council member to, who has the conflict, to leave the dais when the item is discussed by council. Do any staff members have any conflicts that they would like to announce?
I have a conflict regarding McFadden Plaza rehabilitation and Bike Path project due to real property interest conflicts.
Wonderful. Any council members have any conflicts to announce? Okay, I have a conflict to announce regarding to Balboa Island improvement projects due to real property interests at 224 Marine. Okay, let's jump into the staff report. Dave?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. It's actually almost afternoon. My name's Dave Webb, Director of Public Works, and with me today is Jim Houlihan, our Deputy Director and City Engineer. We'll be going through some capital items today, maybe as a format, because we have a handful of projects we want to gleam in on, if it's okay. I'm going to give some background. It's a big topic, as you can imagine. Time can be as long as you want, but maybe we'll go through, and as we get to the certain projects, I'll go through and give some update on those, and then we can talk about each project on a council level and get your input, and then maybe at the end, take public comments to try to keep it moving, or however format you want to go with that. Just a suggestion. So let's jump in. Maybe not. There it is. So let's start a little bit, because there's some new members on our council and also some folks in the audience. The question usually comes up that how do we come up with our projects in our capital improvement program? And it's quite a process, and it goes year-round, but we're really getting into the gist right now. So a lot of our projects are identified through our scheduled city master plans, and I have a list of a few of them here. And this is going to answer part of that question we'll talk about, is our forward thinking and our, as Mayor Protam O'Neill just talked about, kind of looking forward into the future and trying to plan for those items. So we have plans, like our facility finance plan we mentioned a little bit. We have a facility maintenance and management plan. We have a pavement plan throughout our city that guides where we're going to be paving our streets in the next seven years, our slurs sale programs, and out to 20 years, we're looking for arterial pavements. We have a harbor and beaches master plan that talks about our tidelands and our beaches. We have water and sewer plants. Those are now up as we talk about a new possibility of changing the fees. We'll be looking at the projects involved in that and updating those master plans. And then there's a whole series of these plans that help guide us to develop the projects that we need to put in the improvement plan. We also taken a lot of input from council and the community and staff in terms of what we find as needs, or we want things from pickleball to a city dock or whatever it's going to be that we might need, and we'll take that input and work it into the plan if council so chooses. And then we, obviously, just like today, we have a planning session, and you generally have goals and objectives, and those, I've heard a couple a day, that tend to move into capital programs and might generate projects out of that. And lastly, a category that sometimes comes in, we have federal, state law or legal actions that require us to actually generate projects and make implementation of items. So we talked a little bit about this plan. I put it as an example. This is our facility finance plan, and it's a great plan that was developed many years ago. This is just the project sheet, and I know it's too small, I just wanted to put it up as a representative sample. This was last approved by the finance committee in last February, and if I recall, it's going to be coming this February, Mr. Neil, to the committee again to review. We've made some edits. We're looking at updating the costs. This plan and the harbor plan will be coming in the February review, which is then reviewed, adjusted, and as it's approved, then it helps generate what projects will be coming in your capital improvement program. The next step on that program was, and I saw it on the screen earlier, will be in March, on the March 28th meeting, I believe, will be our early look, is what we usually take a look. We've kind of consolidated all the thoughts to date. We've got staff, our master plans, kind of get it in a general format. We'll bring it before the council and the public to kind of look at what we're looking to propose for next year. So with that, I'm going to go through maybe just some larger projects, and we can talk about any of the capital program if you'd like today, but I wanted to focus on a few. We have some things in motion, are about to start, so it's probably important, probably for the new folks and maybe those folks in the audience to see this. One of our big projects, we've been working on for many, many years, and actually goes back eight years, was former Councilmember Duffield started an idea to get the harbor dredged to its ultimate depth. Hasn't been dredged for decades. And so in this project, we basically have, the Army Corps of Engineers is the lead on this. It's a federal obligation to dredge our harbor and the navigational channels. They've already completed phase one. If you saw the dredging workout there a summer ago, it was about a $3 million effort and removed about 125,000 yards of sandy material, which was then put in the near shore to replenish our beaches. Our next phase is about to start. It's about a $20 million effort, and we're going to remove about a million dollars, excuse me, a million yards of material and take that out and dispose of that. So why this project, just some points on here that I pointed out is, the whole goal of this was to basically improve and restore the navigation and recreation of the harbor. The harbor's got a lot of silt that's built up over the years. It was unchecked for the years. It used to come down San Diego Creek when the county actually punched the creek through and the bay in the 60s. That's really been addressed, and the sediment flow has been checked, but we have residual sediment that has deposited in the bottom of the harbor. So we need to remove that. It really ensures that the navigational operations of the harbor, particularly getting back to our shipyards in the back of the harbor, if you know, the two big shipyards are back by the Rhine Wharf, back by the cannery, and there's another one back over towards, I'm thinking the restaurants along Mariners Mile, back towards the end there. Those are the big ones that people need to get to and operate and get their ships taken care of. So that's one of the navigational benefits. The other thing is, our turning basin is at the end of the harbor, as you know, over towards Newport Boulevard, and our harbor is actually a harbor of safe refuge and does accommodate, we haven't seen for years, but large vessels. I've actually seen the pictures of big 200, 300-foot ships back there. Should one need to come in, they need to go all the way to the back, turn around and come out, and right now, there's a lot of built-up material that you can't get back to that. So we're going to be dredging that channel out so that that can actually function as it needs. The other thing, we get improved environmental and water quality effects because it increases the flushing. Right now, we have some stagnant areas, particularly back by Newport Island, some of the areas back there that have some less tidal water change. It'll help with the flushing and that, so we're looking for that. And then with the material that's taken out of the harbor, we have beneficial reuse. As I mentioned, that first phase that came out, a lot of that material went towards the beach. They put it in the near shore. That sandy material helps replenish our beach. There is unsuitable sediments in our harbors. Some of that is okay for ocean disposal. They take it six miles off the coast, they dump it in an EPA-certified site. We also have some unsuitable materials that we have to address in our harbor itself, and we're building what we call a CAD, and you've probably heard that discussion. So we'll be putting that in place. The schedule right now is we've got all our permits. We're going to start bidding this next month, hopefully award the contract, and this is a federal contract. They'll be running the job. We work with them, and then start construction, maybe March or April. And I'm going to stop on this if anybody has any questions on this project. Go ahead.
$20 million, are we getting $10 million from the Army Corps of Federal money?
The, great point. When we talked about grants, this is one of the areas. We did a lot of lobbying in Washington just to get on the map, and then we were basically awarded a little more over $10 million, but the city also agreed about $10 million of our tidelands money against that to match it. Okay, we'll move on. One of our next projects we've been working on that's very close to starting is our central library lecture hall. And if you're familiar with this project, it's a large project that we've been working on for several years. This first slide I put up here is basically a history for those who are new to the council and out in the community. This is going back to the 1819 CIP discussion. We put basically $70,000 in to initiate the project. Later on, in March of 19, when we had our early look, there was a discussion about the project, and the council further added another half million dollars to develop the concepts of it. In that year, we basically formed a new committee to oversee it, as the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee. One of your council members, former member Diane Dixon, actually sat on that committee to help guide that. And then in November of 19, we've basically looked at, we got the approval to hire the architect, and we looked at the overall project and identified that the total cost at that time looks to be about $8 million. The city agreed tentatively to do a 50-50 split. The project at that time was looking at about a 7,000-square-foot, 275-seat item, and it was going to be completed roughly in fall of '22. And I say that because right about then, we had the pandemic hit, and so we have a big gap in time here. Moving on down the road, that we looked at this project again in September of '21, we had another study session on this. After the committee had looked at it, after we had more detailed plans, the project then came out to be roughly, all in about $12,700,000. The council had another discussion on this, agreed to still keep the 50-50 split and up to about a $13 million project. Again, moving forward, in November, we had about a 9,500-square-foot concept, same cost roughly when we looked at the project again. And that brings us to today. We're just at the point, the plans are done, the building permits are ready, we're actually gone out to bid with the project, and we've done our final cost estimate on this, and basically the cost estimate says the construction's going to probably come in about $14 million. That puts an all-in total of about $17.5 million, which is above our $13 million agreement to date. So with that, we will get, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you. Here's my line, I'm sorry, I forgot. That's kind of where we're standing right now. We're out to public bid, we expect the bids in February, but we also do expect we're probably going to have some kind of shortfall on this. So the next steps in this are obviously to receive those bids and see where we're at. We've mentioned that sometimes we have to relook at projects and maybe rebid them again. I'm not sure what'll happen here. We're going to have to decide what we want to do with those bids when they come, either accept them or reject them. And I'm guessing at some point, there might be a discussion that needs to happen on how we're going to deal with the funding overages, because we are on the high side right now. So this might surely take some policy input. That's kind of the briefing on that. I'll just kind of see if there's any questions on that.
Mayor Protam?
So I asked to have this put on because we don't need to have the policy input right away. This is going to come back, obviously, to us, especially when we receive the bids and find out where we're actually going to end up on the costing, but wanted council members to be thinking about this as we go forward into the, into that eventual discussion, because this is substantially more money than we had committed to when we first started down this road. And so, jumping from the $8 million, 50-50, up to $13 million, 50-50, no, that was not small. It was not a small decision to be made, and it wasn't a small amount of money. Jumping from the original eight to 17 and a half on a 50-50 is obviously substantially more. So I'm highlighting this because it's, and honestly, I'm not sure where I am yet, so I'm not, that's one of the reasons I'm kind of hedging on some of this discussion, is I'm still processing this. But again, given that we are going to need to make a decision on this, I asked for staff to include this so that we're at least having a preview of where this is heading. And yes, there are many ways we can handle this. We could stay where we are in terms of the amount that we've committed and say if this project's just going to get funded, it needs to go, you know, larger private contributions need to be made. The project has grown, there are good reasons for that, but it's just, I want, I can't, I really didn't feel comfortable having us just all of a sudden come back with, this is the construction bid, and not have had at least a little bit of discussion on it preliminarily. So anyway, throwing that out there is why this is included in our planning meetings. I asked for it. Thanks.
Councilmember Wagon?
Yes, Mayor Protam O'Neill loosely touched it. So can it go back to, it says 50-50 split, up to $13 million, can that 50-50 carry on to now saying 17.5 or however million it goes up to and say we can't touch it until the private funding comes in to equal that 50-50?
That would purely be a policy call, that if you want to increase that 50-50 agreement split. Can you look for private funding? Absolutely. What you're going to have is you're going to have some bids here in February that's going to tell us where the project's at, and we can only legally hold those bids for so long. So if we're looking for grant funding or something, this project, again, is a, I don't know where it is a priority for the council, that's your, obviously, direction to us, but there's nothing that says it can't stay on the shelf for a while while you're looking for alternative funds if that's so choose, or you can ask for more money, or you can choose to fund it. Those are going to be discussion points for you folks.
And we could say, fund it, get it done with, and then leave, you know, some type of the shortfall on the foundation or out to the public still to continue that capital improvement, to replenish that.
The only thing we need to be cognizant of, when you award a contract, the city's encumbered into that cost. So if you, if you award this project and we have that cost burden, you'll need, probably want some kind of guarantees you're going to get funded or paid. Otherwise, you're basically paying for the project.
Councilmember Grant?
Two questions. One, can I get some clarity on, is the 50-50 split on the building costs, so it's at $14 million, or is the 50-50 split on the entire all-in project cost at 17.5?
The agreement talks about an all-in cost, so the $13 million, what we are on right now, was considered, actually, it was a little higher than the we, our all-in cost, but that was the intent.
Okay, so we're looking at a much larger number than the $14 million. We're looking really at a 50-50 at 17 million, 17 and a half.
17 and a half right now.
And then my other question is, I realize, because I was a participant on the Library Board of Trustees and the Arts Commission, I've worked with the library a long time. This is an absolutely essential project for our community in sort of a cultural need, and I highly laud that as having a priority, but I'm just wondering, you know, we do have a lecture hall now, if we were to like, find that we found bids that were, you know, higher than we thought they needed to be, does it make sense to go back out and rebid it? It seems like you have some sort of indication that maybe that might work in bringing the costs down.
So again, we've mentioned, right now, we've been a very extraordinary time with inflation the last year. Prices have really gone up. We are starting to see some stabilization of that, and we're actually anticipating a little drop coming up. I don't know what, to what degree that is. So sometimes we find we can get a better bid when we go out. I wouldn't think we'd catch up to two or three or four million worth. I mean, but you can also do some value engineering. The plans are done, but we've done that before. We did it with the Junior Guards Building. Just tightening it up a little bit. Those are options in the future.
Okay.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, just want to highlight, and one of the reasons to bring it up now, there are a lot of options when it comes to this. I mean, it's the, right now, the commitment from the council has been 50-50 up to the $13 million. Obviously, there's the option of going 50-50 at 17 and a half, or there's the option of keeping it the 50-50 at 13 and saying any other funding shortfall would need to be negotiated and discussed. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different options to, and those are just two, but there are plenty more. I appreciate, I don't view this as essential. One of the things that we've talked about a number of times up here, at least when we're talking about capital improvement, is the need-to-have versus the nice-to-have projects. I throw this into, it would be great to have, but it's a nice-to-have. Need-to-haves are, you know, police station, fire station, et cetera. So I would like to see it. I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure, my view on that is to that point. And so when we're talking about this much money, you know, when we were talking earlier about where our funding is, and it's where it's going, it's not like we have this much money just kind of sitting there. So that's why I want to make sure we're having this conversation about where we're going. Like I said, I'm struggling with it. This is, at a 50-50, it would be more than we had anticipated the entire project to cost when we first were talking about this. So it's not a small change, but it's also, it is important. So that's why, again, struggling with it, but want to throw out, the options on the table are pretty big. Thanks.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I don't have anything really to add. I've been in several meetings on this. I think everybody involved is excited about it. It's a great project. It really completes this whole campus, if you will, as our civic center. And I think it's going to happen. It's just a matter of, I think we've all got to dig a little deeper and then maybe try and see if we get the timing better just by hanging out a little bit. But to Mr. O'Neill's point, there's options. And I'm positive it's going to get done at some point. Thank you.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I think it's just important to acknowledge that behind any public-private partnership, there's a resident or a group that comes together to put something like this together. And I see Jill Tucker here today, and I just want to thank you and commend you on your efforts to get this to where it is now. And I had the opportunity to sit down with you yesterday and really enjoy the walkthrough and have a much better understanding of the project and what it could add to the city. So I'm cautiously optimistic that bids will come back better than we anticipate and look forward to hearing this in the future and appreciate it being on the agenda.
Wonderful. You know, this project, I think the idea of shelving something like this is crazy. I think that nothing has ever gone down in price in the city of Newport Beach or any project ever built. We've seen bids come out on projects that we might have put out two years ago that are now currently coming back at double and even more than that in cost. And I think that's a combination of both labor and materials, not just the inflationary issues. And, you know, I like the needs and wants reference, but I also have to throw a secondary piece in that is just generalized public benefit. And even though we tend to always stick to the side of conservative fiscal ideals, I think there is something to be said about upgrading the infrastructure within our city for public benefit. And, you know, it doesn't always align necessarily, but I think there's a long-term goal in reinvesting in pieces that might not immediately see impact. And they do, they change neighborhoods. And, you know, I remember growing up and actually laying in the field right here that used to be an empty piece of property owned by the Irvine Company. And to see what it has become and kind of how Fashion Island and the Civic Center have developed into almost the downtown of Newport Beach is an amazing thing to see. And to see the growth and the private investment that's become because of part of these public investments, I think it's not something that we can easily look aside from. And so sometimes our investment as a city begets private investment that starts making the entire district, the entire village, and the entire space a better place. Because, you know, with a building that we build, we might not see that that adds necessary dollars and cents the same way that, you know, public safety might, or better roads. But it does change something in the overall feeling of our city. And I do think that that has a value associated with it that's sometimes hard to put our finger on. And, you know, yes, we have to be responsible about the dollars and cents we spend, but when I see dollars and cents that go to general public enhancement, I tend to really want to agree with projects like that. So I'm definitely for this project. I realize we always have to be very wary of the costs and the way that we bid things out, and I appreciate you guys for bringing this up here. All right, thanks, Dave.
So moving on, Mayor, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Our next project is Balboa Island Drainage. So moving on to what's actually in the design pool right now, the major projects, the first one I want to bring kind of to your attention is the Balboa Island Drainage System. If you're familiar with Balboa Island, I put a series of pictures up here. It's kind of talked to as, it's a bathtub, basically due to the wall. If you've ever been on Balboa Island during a high tide, you'll notice that you're walking along in the water that is above you. So the island's protected now by a series of old pipes that go through the seawall, and we have what we call Tide Gate. There's a picture of one, if you don't know, right in the middle there under the $20 million. And it's a manual valve that the utilities department basically operates, opens and closes to keep the tide out from flooding the island. The problem comes in a point when you have high tides and then you have rains. In the last couple of years, if you remember during the Christmas and the Thanksgiving season, we were blessed with a lot of rain at that time, but they usually come at bad times. I know we had a lot of crews from utilities and Public Works out in the middle of the night, opening and closing these valves, manning pumps, trying to pump the island out. So this project kind of takes it into the 21st century. Most cities have gone this direction where they have lowlands, whether it's in the South or Florida, or even Huntington Beach, Seal Beach. We want to look at installing an automated pump system, which would generally consist of probably one pump station down by the West End, looking right around the Collins Avenue Bridge. It would be a high-capacity pump. It would be on 24/7. If it rained or the tides came up, we wouldn't be operating gates anymore. It would just collect the water and push the water off. It would be designed for a 100-year storm. That's one of the important things we want to look at because eventually we want to get the island to be FEMA compliant, which would reduce the insurance rates on the island. It would greatly reduce the amount of labor and equipment that we have to operate trying to keep the island dry, add a little more safeguard in there. It's always a chance. I know, and utilities does a great job. We plan and we stage ahead, but, you know, it's still not a fail-safe system by having all that. We're looking at reducing all the discharges on this island to, basically from 25 down to one, that one pump station. And the nice thing about that is then we could add water quality features, like as that stormwater comes through, we could screen it out, we could remove the trash and debris, maybe down to the size of a cigarette, but that material now is just washing through the holes and going out in the bay. And then also like a low flow that, basically, the people washing their cars and the dribble and things that get on the streets and flow off, that could be collected and we could pick that up and we could divert it into the sewer for treatment that way. And it helped with the water quality of the bay. So we're just in the design part of this. I will say, it sounds easy on the surface, but if you can imagine, Balboa Island's a very difficult place to work. The small streets, the confinement, everything's built out, no place to stage. We've got a lot of work going on there now. If you're familiar with what we've been doing, we've been doing a lot of utility work underground. There's just one utility district on the West End that's completed. At your next meeting, you're going to award the start of the next district. It basically undergrounds the rest of the island. So we're going to do a lot of that work. And then the next thing would be to put the drainage system in. And then what the residents really been after me for years is let's work on the streets. But of course, we want to get the underground in before we start replacing streets. So there's a lot of moving parts here. This is a key one. It's a long-term protection goal for the island. And that's kind of, take any questions on this project.
Grace, does this come from, pardon me, since this isn't water sewer, this is all general fund? Yeah. And look, this is sort of my point in talking, you can't just talk about projects in a vacuum when we're talking about our budget, especially when it comes to general fund. This is sort of why I'm highlighting, I highlight all of these when we're trying to work this through because it all works together. And we're not the federal government, so we don't get to just print new money. $20 million for a drainage system on Balboa Island is incredibly important, and we've been working this through for a while. So this is something that we've been setting aside money for, for a little while. It's going to take, obviously, a while. It's going to take time, but this one, I'm pretty darn excited about this one. And I know a lot of residents on the island are really looking forward to us trying to figure out how to get this done quickly so that we can do a comprehensive repair of all the streets on Balboa Island as well, do a much better job there. So this stuff, we've got to do this going forward, and it's going to be phenomenal for water quality as well. So I'm excited that we've gotten this one kicked off and we're rolling through. Councilmember Grant.
I'm just curious, is there a phase two for Little Island, or are they not experiencing the same conditions? Is this it?
We will need to look at Little Island next, again, being separate, but it's much smaller, but we'll need to do the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Avery.
There's something about Balboa Island, it's really expensive. I don't know. I think the residents should each pitch in a couple hundred bucks toward the drainage, the undergrounding. Well, I don't know, because we're looking at, that's another thing that's kind of going off the charts in terms of cost and the seawall. But it costs money to live in paradise, I guess. So, but it's too bad Joe Beek didn't get some dredges and pile more sand on that island, so it could be the level of Lido Island, which we wouldn't have the issue. Thank you.
Of course, actually, go back to 1915 when we were looking at annexing it in, and the city council actually voted against it for a lot of infrastructure reasons.
Very wise.
Interesting. Anyway, all right, go ahead.
Thank you. And I would just note for the new councilmembers, as Mayor Protem O'Neill just mentioned, there's a lot of other things we need to keep in speak. I didn't talk about the seawall issue, and there's a 76, 78 million dollar seawall that is now being looked at out there, and that's going to be worked in the plan, so.
So Dave, I'll tell you what, I'm going to just stop for just a second since the mayor has a conflict on this. If anyone would like to speak directly to this Balboa Island Drainage System for public comment, we'll go ahead and do that now.
Dennis Bress, resident Balboa Island. And yeah, couldn't be happier with your work, Dave, on this. We really appreciate it. I know Lee Pearl has really been spearheading this. And yeah, so, you know, the staff that goes around and manually does the turning of the drains, as long as I've been down there for 37 years, you know, that's what they do. So we're going to get into the 21st century and be automated, which is going to be great. Yeah, climate change, I mean, that low-lying area right by the ferry where I'm at on Agate, you know, when the tide comes up, that's a weak link right there. So luckily, staff is there, and they do put in, and the ferry has to stop sometimes, and then they have the pumps, so your guys are on it. So we're excited about this. And yeah, Brad, thank you for the comments. I mean, it is a great place to live. We've, as a community, and I know Noah talks about this a lot, we all have villages within our beautiful city. And we really thank the council for, you know, listening to us. Will, based on landmark trees, eucalyptus trees on Marine Avenue, God, I can't tell you how, I'm so glad that's behind us and that we are able to come over that bridge and see those beautiful trees. Our group, Balboa Island Preservation Association, had, shared an email. Some artists were down in town and did some paintings, and they shared one that was of, from the fire station looking back on Marine. And man, the eucalyptus trees look just phenomenal, so we love it. So yeah, underground utilities, that's huge, that one side, you know, Little Island's already done, and we worked with Public Works and were able to go through the democratic process to get that approved by the residents there. So we do bear the cost. It's about 20 grand per home there for undergrounding, but that's going to, we believe, really help us out. We know what it's like when you walk to Little Island. There's no telephone poles. And in my location, I have 13 abutting the property on the island there with the alleys. So to have those gone is going to be phenomenal. And the work you did too on Agate there to put that crypt in for the other district, thank you. That was, I think it was two months the ferry was down, something like that, and you guys really hammered through that. So, and thanks to Seymour and that crew for putting up with that. So yeah, we're in a good place, so let's keep it going. Thank you.
Any other?
Mayor Protem O'Neill, Jim Mosher. I'm just curious, are we really planning to abandon the tide valves so that during the many hours of a high tide, we're going to let the bay flow into Balboa Island through many inlets as rapidly as it can? And then task ourselves with trying to pump all of that out through a single point? Seems like that would be quite a pump holding all that flow. And if the pump failed, what do you do? I would think we're not totally abandoning and never using our tide valves. Certainly seemed if they could be automated to some extent, that would simplify and make the process a whole lot more reliable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynda Kenzie, Little Balboa Island. Robyn, I just want to say thank you and ask all of you, don't forget the Little Island when you're thinking about all these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm pleased to see the initiative to address the drainage on the island. It shows that there are, we see a problem and we're addressing the problem. Difficult to contemplate that 20 million just for the island is going to be part of a general funds and borne by the entire population of Newport Beach when it benefits the island. This is going to become a larger issue because what I've raised to you is that Dave mentioned that the programming for this, for the drainage system is based on a 100-year flood presumption. And in the last 20 years plus, I've observed that the 20-year, the 100-year flood horizon has changed to, in our experience, to be more of an every-five-or-10-year horizon. The 100-year flood notion is really under attack today. And Mr. Avery commented on the changes in our climate that is occurring, where our weather patterns are changing. And I think we're going to see more water create flooding issues in our community and other communities, and we need to determine how to assess that issue, if it is an issue, and get into this larger capital improvement programming that goes, that looks further than just our current flooding issues. Because sea rise is happening, it has compounding effects in wave surges, in underground saltwater infusion into our groundwater system, a greater pressure that pushes the water up into the land, compounds flooding. And I want to be comfortable that we're looking at this because this excellent plan might work, be great for the next couple of years, but be worthless 20 years from now. I'd like us to look at long-term planning.
All right. It's Mr. Mosher's question about the tide valves abandonment issue. What are your thoughts there?
Actually, and I apologize for that, the goal would be to take those out. They'd be permanently sealed so they would not operate. There'd be no holes through the, basically, seawall anymore. All the water would be collected within the island, taken to an underground drainage system, brought to the pump station and pumped over the seawall. So that's typically how we'd protect the island. The vulnerability are those holes in the wall. When the new seawall went in, we basically not have those anymore. Mr. Avery.
And there are multiple pumps, right, Dave?
I don't know how many, Mark, I don't know if Ms. Rakoyevich is there. I got to think there's 15 pumps on the island when we're pumping, and they don't have enough. They move them around. They kind of pump an area and they pump an area.
But the new system going in?
New system would be four pumps is what we're looking at now. There's usually redundancy built in there. A 100-year storm is just a frequency they use. I don't know if we've been seeing a series of 100-year storms, as I've heard, but we have had them. And some of the pictures you alluded to, we have people rowing in the streets and flooded houses. It fills up pretty quick, so that would be the design element, that all that water's taken down and it can pump that out. It just says how much you want to spend. You could do a 500-year storm. I mean, some people do that, but it's more pumps, it's more capacity, things like that. The standard is 100-year for the FEMA requirements to remove the flood insurance requirements.
So we'll still be able to bring additional pumps down?
We could bring portable pumps. You could still pump off.
And they're in trailers, right?
And they're mobile pumps.
Mobile pumps, and yeah, we've all seen them set up. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'll hand it back to the mayor.
So this next project is kind of down on the peninsula area. It's one of our key restrooms, and this is coming again out of the FFP program. It's now coming into the programming window. So we're looking at starting the replacement of the 15th Street restroom. It's about $1 million all-in. Building was built in 1961. It's been rehabbed several times. Our maintenance folks are just holding it together with baling wire and Band-Aids. The plumbing system's about shot, so rather than keep reinvesting in an old facility, it's time to probably move and rebuild this facility. So we'll be starting the community discussions, you can see the picture on it there, and see if we can improve on the looks, and we'll probably incorporate some trail splits and other things that we've since talked about and made some decisions on as we go through the design.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I'm sorry, public comments, what's the timeline on this? You're going to go out to the public and ask for them to put in input into the project?
Yeah, we'll start a conversation, we'll probably start with Central Newport HOA, and we'll need to talk to them and get the inputs. and we'll need to talk to them and get the inputs. We've had discussions on the past councils about the boardwalk and other things, beautification. Also, this is going to tie into another project I'll talk to about in just a minute, which is just down by the pier.
Yeah.
All that conversation will probably start together. The comments we're going to want to look at is what kind of aesthetics do you want? We know some needs. I don't think we're going to be reducing the amount of stalls and things like that. There's been some discussion, should we go from a one restroom facility for men's and women's to individual facilities? And it really comes around, is that a better use? Some people worry about the homeless because they can be condos, and how do we deal with security and things like that. So that discussion has to come out, too, the design elements of it.
Yeah, well, the new one by the Balboa Pier looks really good. I ran by it this morning, so look forward to seeing this done.
Great.
And I think we can tie this in to kind of the bookend on the other piece as well, Dave. But I do think that is a large concern of the community, that we're going to build bathrooms for the homeless. And I think part of our design has to really incorporate that idea, that this is not, they're not condos on the beach where you can pitch your tent next to them. So, thank you.
All right, moving in a little different direction, our environmental program. This next project is the Newport Beach, we call it Trash Wheel. It's a unique design. There's actually copying a design they do back on the East Coast where they're on a conveyor belt type system where they move the material into this facility. The facility picks it up, takes it out of the water stream, and basically puts it in bins to be hauled off. We look at this project about a $3.3 million project. We've got a lot of grant money on this project so far, so the policy questions we might have on this one coming up. It's going through the permit process. We think we might be able to start this next fall. Currently, we've got one, or it's $2.18 million in grant funding. We thought we could do this all in grant funding, but because of the nature of the project, the inflation, we had to move it a little bit with some other things. We're currently at a $1.5 million, $1.6 million shortfall. Staff is aggressively looking for more grants. There is some money out there, but we may need to talk to you folks about how you want to go with this if we can't find the necessary grant money.
Wonderful. And for those of you that don't know, this was a former council member, Duffield's project. He worked for a life, but six, seven years on this. So things move pretty quickly in government, so here we go.
Great. And just for clarification, for those who don't know, there's a picture on the top, very top, where this is located. It's just between the Jamboree Bridge and the 73 freeway on the San Diego Creek. And that picture below is just for your reference. That's our log boom. That's our folks removing all the material after a storm that we catch right around NAC that we take out. We're hoping something like this can help reduce that load. Okay, well, let's kind of move then on another direction and what's just getting started. And when I say this, we had some conversations already when we said get just getting started. This has now been programmed in the budget, and we are starting conversations on this. So the first one we wanted to talk about is the Balboa Peninsula Fire Station Library. It is now another FFP program project coming forward. We're just starting the conversations. Basically, we're looking at starting the design this year. It'll be programmed in the budget coming up, and construction set for 2025. Preliminary thoughts on this building is basically maybe a 7,500-square-foot joint building. When I say joint, we tried this over at the Corona Del Mar Library, and it seemed to work out well. So we currently have a fire station, a library on the site. We're thinking surely we're going to have a fire station back. We've worked with the chief. We think a three-person fire station will still work. We'll probably build it for four. We actually usually include an extra dorm room for a captain or a trainee or something like that. We need a small branch library there. We know that's an ongoing cause. We'd also like to maybe look at if there's room to put in a Public Works equipment bay. Why I say that is if you're familiar with our yard, it's up by Costa Mesa Superior Industrial Way. We haul that equipment, like the B-track and everything, all the way down every day to the end. It'd be nice if we could park it there and then use it daily, kind of shorten things up. Or in storm season, keep a loader or something down there that we need to get down to the pier and speed things up. And then also, there's been a kind of a general request and thought that we might want to do a small community park here. This property is about 25,000 square feet, a little over a half acre, and you could probably fit all that in. You could see the picture on the top there. So I think if we looked at all that and how we put it together, we could probably accommodate this. But we want to make sure we have our policy right. So the first question for the council is any guiding policies for us on this? Is this the right uses? We've already started discussions with the Library Foundation, and they'll be looking for the parameters, basically, size of the library, things like that. Is this the right usage? You'd like us to start developing concepts around. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I know residents around there are very eager to sit down with you and your team once we get ready to design and concepts and everything. Remind me, we spent how much on the fire station, the new one we just built on the peninsula?
About eight and a half all-in for the two.
Okay. And how much was CDM?
Good question. I wish I remembered. Seven, six, seven, or seven. Not seven, let's say.
Okay. And you think we'll build this for less than seven?
Well, it depends. I put the TDB on there because I really need to kind of know, where does council want to be? Here's some thoughts on this. It's a single-story facility now, but the fire station's two-story. We can build the fire station like we did at CDM because we have able-bodied people in there. We don't need the ADA elevators you do. If you put a library and you double-deck this or put a two-story, you're going to have to add elevators. That adds a lot of cost, one upfront. You could say a half million to three-quarter million dollar elevator. And then you've got the ongoing maintenance because elevators require certification checks. So you make that step, along with stairwells and adding space. So if you, again, it's funny, one of the comments we had the other day, and this is a policy question, and it'll have to come through the council, is what's the purpose of the library? And I'll ask the library director to speak to that. She's on top of that. But one of the thoughts was we should build a big thing to draw people down there. Our thought was, I don't know if the library is going to be the magnet the Balboa Bridge wants to draw people down there. Maybe the library should just serve the community, because that has been tried before in other areas, and it doesn't necessarily pan out, and you end up with a big building. So, but that's, again, policy question. It's a community asset. Do you need community room space? We talked about technology with the library board. They want to make sure, because there's probably a lot of college students, snowbirds that use it, so we want to make sure we put good internet technology in there. We have a transfer program. But what are the other uses? And they're looking at that right now from a library standpoint. We'll also have that talk with the fire groups, what kind of uses they have. And again, recreation, you can talk about. They feel it'd be a great place for a little totlot. The library and rec folks think they merge together well, where the parents bring the kids to the library, and they're also using the playground. And how would that all fit in? So we're just starting that. Our first step is usually with the council and get to your guidance, because you set the parameters in the box with funding and guidance, and then we'll work with the library board, the community, and within those windows.
I do see the success of this project because it is so locked into a residential neighborhood, really kind of emulating what we've done in Corona Del Mar. And I think when we toured it, we had had some good discussions kind of about switching where the library is, to put that next to the houses, move the fire station onto the corner, something that seems like it's a little bit more appropriate there. And I, you know, I think we've done great things in Corona Del Mar with that facility. And I'm kind of under the impression we're going to, we're going to keep in on that focus. And I think it'll probably be a little bit more. Great.
Okay. So then, another large project we're just starting out, and this was Mayor Blom and former Mayor Dixon, Councilmember Dixon, started this discussion last year, which is coming into the budget. And basically, the Newport Pier, McFadden Plaza area is probably our highest exposure tourist area in the city. It's surely where you're known for. That's where people go down, take their picture. I'm at Newport Beach. So it's got a lot of precedence there, but it is showing its wear. Most of the areas, you go down there, the parking lots are full. There's just people all the time. So the plaza and the public buildings are just showing their age, from the pier to the lifeguard facility to the restroom, from just the plaza around there. So we're thinking we should start a revitalization of this area, and it really is where the council wants to go with this. We've talked about kind of looking as a clean sweep here. We've got trail splits we want to do in here. Is the parking lot right? Should we do better private-public interfaces, because we have challenges there? So some of the things we just thought is review and considerations we want to go through is obviously replace the pier. Excuse me, can't talk today. That's in our harbor capital plan, basically. It's just coming up, one of the key components of that. We want to talk about the height of it, maybe the materials. Concrete's kind of the leading edge right now versus the wood piers. What about the plaza itself? Do we want to change the design of that? Where the restrooms go? We talked about trying to make them more public-friendly, but maybe a little less homeless-driven. That might be something we want to work in, the aesthetics. Lifeguard Headquarters, Lifeguard Headquarters used to be the police facility, too, down there. It's a large building, I'm sorry, fired down there. I can't seem to talk today. So what we think we need is a smaller headquarters there, and we have to program that in. But there's a lot of uses there, and how do we move that into it? So we have to have those discussions. Maybe more restaurants. We just took the restaurant off the end of the pier, as you know, and it had problems out there. But the discussion we're thinking is about maybe moving the restaurant towards the Lifeguard Headquarters or closer to the beach. It makes it more viable and doable for folks. We get a lot of complaints about walking out a quarter mile to the restaurant. And it also separates another use. We have the fishermen at the end of the pier that really has their own environment that we want to work. So maybe separating those two and bringing the restaurant forward and letting more fishing happen out there might be an option. The Dory Fleet is right there. We might want to talk about how we work that in. We've done some rehab on that over the years. It's probably due for some more. And then parking lots. And we talked about separating the trails. That was a big conversation for the new folks. We just have so much use of the boardwalk, and there's just not enough capacity. And when it goes through this plaza here, we have a lot of interference between the cars and the vehicles. So maybe putting one of the trails on the outside around the parking lot and have the walkers and pedestrians. All ideas we want to start talking with the community on. So that is that project. Define not cost-wise, too. I'm sorry, about $36 million, but I don't know what that's going to cost, depending on where you folks want to go.
Wonderful. And, you know, I think as we kind of start the ideas of these projects, these are long-term infrastructure projects that I think are important to the city. And when I think of a world-class city like Newport Beach, and I look at piers, and I've never thought I would go tour just piers in California, but I've extensively now gone up and down the coast and looked, there's really some vibrancy and almost, you know, an iconoclast vision of what the piers can bring to the city. And when I look at ours right there, you know, I think there is something that we can bring back, the historical nature of what the pier looks like. And I think when Dave talks about higher with concrete, immediately, you know, people start getting nervous that what are we going to build? Correct. And I see you out there, Nancy. And, but I think that sometimes the infrastructure underneath can be stronger, but the idea and the design can be classic. And really keeping some of those wooden elements over, maybe something that's a little bit more robust, that we're not replacing the pilings continuously on, can still feel like the history that Newport is. And I think that's why the Dory Fleet came up in here. And, you know, I don't like the term redevelopment of the pier. I like the term reimagining the pier. And when we look to reimagine these areas of Newport, we're not trying to change them. We're trying to emulate what the culture that established them is and bring them up into the current day and age. And, you know, I love the idea of the Dory Fleet, but I look out here and I don't imagine a lot of you are frequenting it that often. But I think running water and drainage would be really great for them. I think, you know, kind of feeling like we have our own Pike Place Market in Newport would add to kind of the allure and the luster of getting people down to that area. And I think that comes with kind of looking at the entire project holistically, which is why I think there's so many items on here, why it comes with a lot of issues we've had over the years, you know, whether it's electric bikes on the boardwalk. If we start looking at things individually, and these cost numbers start looking large, but that doesn't mean the project isn't done in phases, or we're not looking at individual pieces as we start moving forward with it. But we want to focus on these villages, and we want to connect the villages of Newport. And I think it's important, if we start looking at our most high-profile pieces, because then the investment starts coming around them. And if you've been down to McFadden recently, you know, a lot of independent people have put money into the area, but as a whole, I think it needs a lot more investment. And, you know, in some of these pieces, I think it is the nature of these public enterprises to take the lead so that other people will find the ability to invest in them and be able to pencil something out on the private sector. And so I, at this stage, and I think as Dave has said, we are looking for nothing but public input. We want a robust conversation out there to how we can improve Newport. And part of this is honestly how to clean up these areas that have become, the term blight is wrong, but I'm going to use it. And so it has become something that I bet a lot of us don't go down there. I can't remember the last time any of you have wanted to walk out on the pier. And so we want to change that. I think that's the goal and direction of council, is to improve the city with the input of the community. So, Councilmember Grant.
Just talking about the restaurant specifically, is the idea of replacing a restaurant there to somehow monetize that property so that we are receiving some kind of income to offset other expenses? Or, because we do have a lot of restaurants and a lot of private investment down in that area, and I'm just curious, like, what are the pros or cons that you've looked at about the replacement, since clearly we've had, you know, not great success in more recent years with the restaurant?
I haven't done the economics of it. I think it's more community-driven. There's historically been a restaurant on the pier, on both our piers. But we've heard things positive and negative. We've had challenges over the years with the restaurant on the pier. Other folks who had success, we look at other piers, as the mayor just mentioned. You look at San Clemente, they moved their restaurants close to the land. They're still over the water, but they're very vibrant because they're relatively easy to get to. Whether the council wants to do it for the convenience or the novelty, or is a revenue generation base would be your decision. You could have no restaurant. I do know the restaurant would be a generator of revenue. We'd surely lease the property or something, so there'd be some level of return on it. And how big and what we can do. It's also another factor, because this is all in the coastal zone, we have to keep the regulatory agencies in mind. We're going to see what we can. I think this would be, just me personally, I think it'd be beneficial. It should sell well. We have had concerns for years between the combination, the restaurant and the uses at the end of the pier, particularly the fishermen, or just, let's say they could be a little more clean. And people get nervous with that. So, but they have a use there. That's a state requirement that we allow free fishing at the end of the pier. So it's just a thought, and it could move mid-pocket. It could be back at the end. The pier is quite a long walk at times. I'm sorry, just one thing. We haven't, to make sure people know, we haven't predetermined anything here. This is just something the mayor and former member Dixon said, we need to start looking at it. So we've hired a consultant to start community meetings and start gathering that input. And then all this is going to be working through these meetings and you folks to generate policy, and it could be built over time. It could be built an element at a time. Some of these buildings, like the library, I'm sorry, the Lifeguard Headquarters are in our FFP coming up for replacement. Probably make a good decision what we want to do and where to do it before we get to the point of having to replace it.
Yeah, I just want to echo the mayor's comments. I mean, what a vision. And I'm excited to see this. I've been on the peninsula for 17 years, and I would share with a lot of my fellow residents that there's a lot of business owners that are investing a lot of time, energy, and resources in that surrounding area, and I think the city needs to do the same. We need to give residents and visitors a reason to go to the pier, which should be a marquee venue in a city like Newport Beach, and we've gotten away from that. So I'm excited to continue the hard effort on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. I think this is somewhat analogous, a much smaller scale, to the Fun Zone area that, you know, has just sort of drifted for many, many years, and needs, definitely needs a refresh, or rebuild, or reimagining, all those things. And my only concern is, to Mr. Blom's point, you know, right out of the box, when we talk about a concrete pier, you know, we don't want, I think we can do better than Huntington Beach, no offense to Huntington Beach, but just something that sort of is the right scale for the area. So I don't think the pier should dominate sort of the visuals of the whole area when you're walking around. So that's my only concern. And I understand, I mean, the piers are more vulnerable if they're too low and the waves are coming up underneath them. But, you know, it's going to be a big number to do that, just the pier. It's going to be mind-boggling. So, and then obviously, this is a project that will need to be phased over time. It could take several decades to do, I would imagine, considering everything else that we've got going on. And, you know, there are things to come, so it has to be phased in there. But I think absolutely is a great, a great marker to put down and give future directors of Public Works and their staff something to chew on for a long time, and future councils as well. So, but I think it's important to describe it fully and to put it so people can kind of get a sense of what it can be. That's what's really important. That's how you keep it kind of alive, is to kind of sketch this out in collaboration with all the business owners and everybody. There's all kinds of opportunities here. There may be an opportunity to do some infrastructure in terms of protecting the area from big waves. So as we look at that parking lot and what can happen there in terms of some concrete work, and perhaps push into parking, and I know on the, and I'll stop here because I'm not going to get into this, but in several areas on the north coast of Europe, Holland, Brittany, they've built down six feet, five feet, and they've built up, and the parking goes underneath, and the sand rolls up on top, and then you can, you still have your views. And it also provides another And it also provides another height for, for waves to come up against instead of rolling into whatever restaurant activity you've got going on. So plenty to chew on here for, and I think it'd be great to have the public involved. Thanks.
Wonderful.
Okay. So lastly, I want to kind of wrap up our discussion is looking forward towards the 2023-24. That's the capital improvement program we're putting together now. We'll be bringing this to you on the 28th of March, but just to kind of validate some of the assumptions we're making. We're going to focus our resources on the nuts and bolts infrastructure right now that we have a lot of backbone stuff working on, streets, pipes, existing facilities. The CIP is rather big right now. Last year, or this year's current adopted CIP is 103 million. I'm seeing that it might be larger when we bring it to you in March. There's just a lot to be done. We want to deliver the key projects already in the CIP. And again, these are just suggestions. We'd like kind of council's input and validation. We want to plan, for the new folks, we always tend to put a certain amount of general fund in our CIP. It's historically been about $5 million. We, we raised that, and we want to keep that maybe this year at $6 million towards CIP. This would be, again, the nuts and bolts and pipes we need to fund. We have our facility major maintenance plan, and we want to increase that from 1.5, I think it is this year, to 2.5. This is the plan that replaces all the air conditioners, paints the buildings, does that big capital stuff. We have a lot of facilities in this town. I was just talking to a colleague about this, and they have a few. And we have, we have about 87, 89 facilities. That's very big for a city our size, but we, we do a lot of things. We have a lot of beach restrooms that people don't have. A new component we're looking at this year, we're looking to put $1 million towards a park capital maintenance plan. This would be like the facility maintenance plan above it. We, this, last year, the council put in money to have a consultant look at all our sporks parts, our, our parks, and look at like our ball diamonds and our restrooms and our irrigation systems. We don't have an ongoing plan for that. So this would be the funding for what we're going to find. We know we already have irrigation controllers and sprinkler systems that have been out there for 30 years and need replacement. We have ball diamonds that are at the end of their useful life, so we'd start using this fund to start a regular replacement program. And then also just continue on with all those FFP efforts we talked about here, the various projects we talked about today, and finish the junior guards. We're finishing the PD purchase, which is great. Start the lecture hall, depending on what the bids are in your direction. Get going on the Balboa Fire Station, et cetera. So that's our plan to kind of put it together right now, and I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Seeing no other comments up here right now, let's go out to public comment.
Thank you. Great discussion, great presentation, Dave. I would just want to highlight to add to this, you know, with great vision in regards to the pier for McFadden, it just highlights how lucky we are here in Newport with the beautiful, you know, locations that we have. And I think one of the things we need to build into this conversation is the mobility to get around. You know, Fashion Island had that EV cart system that they were doing for a while that now has gone seasonal. We've got the trolley that goes down the peninsula that it seems like the public is embracing more. I've also had someone approach me on Balboa Island that they're interested in actually starting some type of trolley system on an EV platform that would get people from when they land on the pier on Agate over to Marine. And then a big discussion's going on right now in regards to mobility with EV bikes. I know, you know, it's been a problem, right, based on how some people have just, there's different classifications, and we're trying to figure this out, right? They're almost like mini motorcycles, and they go pretty fast. And kids are using them to get out. I know the Daily Pilot today had a front-page picture of a program where they're trying to get kids out to fish in Huntington Beach at certain lakes so they can really get outside, right? And I think that's what we want to advocate here in town, is to get people out and cruising around. If there's a way to do it that you don't necessarily have to get in a car, wow. If we could incorporate some of this thought of EV mobility with some ability of oversight, right, based on speeding and et cetera, we can get out to visit all these places. One of the things I'm advocating with the county is, we've got that asset that is the Santa Ana River Trail, right? So if you look at Google Maps down on that river trail, it runs right up Orange County. And there's a ton of people that visit Newport Beach in their cars that could simply get on an EV bike and get into that, you know, protected and very well-designed thoroughfare to get all the way down. That's how I used to come down from Bray. I'd get on my 10-speed in the 80s and ride the 10-speed all the way down to Newport Beach. Or you had to get on OCTA and, and take the bus, which took a long time. But either way, I think we're afforded with what we're looking to do in rejuvenating, reimagining these different locations. Let's keep in mind that if we can incorporate into that what we all know we have to deal with, and that's this EV infrastructure to get out of our cars and to actually get around town that way. What a great way to cruise around Newport in a whole day and have some, some fun on an EV bike at all these new places we're building. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon. Nancy Scarborough again. When we're talking about projects, I'd like to see some consideration for a community center in the west side, Newport Heights. Newport Heights has a community center, which is a 700-foot square, one-room meeting room with two bathrooms that have not been remodeled. They look like they belong in a prison. They've got stainless steel toilets, concrete floors, graffiti on the walls. They're just an embarrassment. We are talking about loading up new homes in those areas, high-density projects for RENA, and we have no community facilities. We don't have a senior center. We don't have any kind of, anything. No basketball. We do own a building that was purchased to be a community center in Newport Heights, or Newport, West Newport, and we rent it to the Pacific Christian High School. So it is not a community center. And although that's a good use, it's a building that the city owns, and we're not using it for the purpose we purchased it for. So I don't know how that can be rejiggered, but I'd like to see something that happens that is for the residents there. And while we're talking about that same concept, we are loading up new homes in high-density projects in the airport area, and we do not have anything under consideration for that area for community. So those might be something we could consider for long-term planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Carmen Rosen. I live in the Balboa Peninsula. I agree that the McFadden Plaza area, it will be good to separate the pedestrians and bicycles trails, but not in the rest of the peninsula from 36th to 15th Street. I walk on the boardwalk every day, four miles, and it will not solve the problem of having bicycles and pedestrians interfering with each other to have a separate trail. Already in the work that Public Works has done, looking at other cities, they saw that bicycles got into the pedestrian trail. So what I see is they were going to have a huge investment in capital. Also, we are going to have additional expenses in maintenance and operations. Right now, when you have sandstorms at the beach, right, you have sand in the boardwalk that takes days to remove. Now you're going to have another trail that you will have to maintain. And when during the summer, the trail for the bicycles is going to be full of bicycles, it's going to overflow and come to the pedestrian trail because we don't have enforcement. Without enforcement, you are not going to solve the problem. You're going to do an investment that is not going to be only capital investment, but also for eternity, operation and maintenance extra cost. So take that into consideration. It's not going to solve the problem. Regarding sea level rise, a gentleman mentioned that. For years, we have, when people do developments at the city, park fees that have been a separate funding for parks, to be dedicated for parks. How about when we look and focus in the future, there is a lot of money being spent on Balboa Island, I'm glad for them, but for the beach, nothing is planned. So how about having sea, sea level rise funding that later we can have some money there to address the issues when we have higher waves and peak tide? Also, TOT in our city has been 10% for many years, since 1992 at least. I know other cities have higher TOT fees. So how about adding a 1% to TOT where that money is set aside to address, you know, flooding on the beach area? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Ken Rosson. I live also on Balboa Pier, and I'd like the city council to modify the study that's coming up for McFadden Square regarding the bicycles. I've lived here for 30 years now, and I agree that the bike path coming from 36th Street into McFadden Square has got a real problem. And so the bicycle traffic needs to be studied at that parking lot for sure. But the concept that the staff has established the boundaries from 36th Street to 15th Street is wrong. And what I ask anyone on the council to do is just go ride your bikes, walk however you want to do it, but go from 36th Street to 15th Street, any day of the week. The traffic on the boardwalk does not stop at 15th Street. We have too many bikes on the boardwalk. We all acknowledge that. If we want to do double pass, combined pass, whatever we want to do, but the problem doesn't stop at 15th Street. The traffic goes all the way down the existing boardwalk. And I remind you that the traffic that we have from the junior lifeguard program goes all the way down to Balboa Pier. The whole concept that we're going to do a study from 15th Street to 36th Street is only taking the problem halfway. And if you look at where 15th Street ends, it won't even get the students that go to Newport L. to their playground or to the school in the morning. It'll stop one block short of the school. So please, when you do this study with a consultant, do the study for the whole length that needs to be improved on the boardwalk. It's not the 15th Street. That's not the answer. I'm very concerned you're going to do just 36th to 15th and say, we solved the problem. But how do you get those junior lifeguards off of, let's say we end up with two bike paths? How do you get them off that separate bike path back to one bike path at 15th Street and take them all the way down to Balboa Pier? It's going to be a traffic nightmare. So you need to look at if you're going to have separate bike paths, at least separate bike paths, because the traffic is from pier to pier, or 36th Street to the pier, Balboa Pier, not Newport Pier. The study needs to go to Balboa Pier. 15th Street is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the capital improvement program?
Thank you, Mayor Blom, members of the council. My name, as you know, is Jim Mosher. First of all, regarding one of the later things we heard about, the Balboa Peninsula Library and Fire Station project. I am aware some residents have noted with some concern that the, several of the landmark trees on that property that are nesting sites for herons, which people may or may not approve of, have been recently posted for removal and are curious whether that's part of the CIP project or something unrelated to that. Regarding the first presentation about harbor dredging, we heard again today, as we've heard before, that it will improve the flushing of the harbor. I may not understand this any better than I understand the drainage project on Balboa Island, but at least to me, the tide goes up and down the same amount, however deep the harbor is. And I'm wondering if any modeling has been done to actually confirm that this will improve the flushing in the area around Newport Island. I, I don't understand how it would affect that personally. What I wanted to use my minute four here, or three minutes, is because four of you were not on the council when we had a similar meeting a year ago, January 29th, 2022. I wanted to review the things that the former council voted on in this segment of the presentation. And Director Webb asked for their votes on this, which apparently were all unanimous. The things approved a year ago were, number one, have the finance committee conduct an initial review of the Balboa Yacht Basin Project. I believe that may have happened, but that project didn't seem to be presented today. Proceed with developing an electric vehicle policy, which sounds quite a lot like what Mr. Bress was talking about. I don't recall that happening at all. Include the Balboa Library and Fire Station Replacement Project in the budget. That did happen. Support a 15.5 million dollar project list, probably, I'm, I'm sure it happened at the meeting. I don't quite recall what the list was. Use ARPA funding towards the library lecture hall and junior lifeguard building projects. I think that probably happened, although we didn't hear how that it worked out. And then finally, have a council subcommittee look at purchasing land for a future police department headquarters. And that apparently happened, but what bothers me is the subcommittee didn't seem to be appointed by the council. It seems to be appointed by the staff. So the decision to choose the property in Dove Street in airport area was made by a subcommittee that the public didn't really know unless they paid really close attention to this meeting, was going to be created and doesn't know who created the committee or who's on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comments out there? Perfect. Bringing it up real quick. Do we have anything else to add from the dais at this point? You don't need any direction from us right now, do you? Perfect. Wonderful. We stand adjourned.